Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 11th. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Do we have any introductions or announcements, Mayor Protam?
You better believe it. We sure do. In fact, we have a pretty serious one involving fire safety. The Prescott Fire Department, in conjunction with the National Fire Protection Association, has announced that October 9th through the 15th is National Fire Prevention Week. The theme for this year's campaign is "Fire Won't Wait: Plan Your Escape." According to the NFPA data, three-quarters of all U.S. fire deaths occur in homes. Unfortunately, this is the place where most people feel safest from a fire, but is actually the greatest risk. There are, however, things that you can do in your home to keep you safe in this unfortunate event that your house does catch fire. Smoke detectors should be installed just outside each separate sleeping area and on every floor of your home, and don't forget the kitchen area and the garage. Test them monthly. Forty percent of all home fire deaths occur in a home with no functional smoke detector. The batteries in both smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors should be replaced at least once a year with high-quality alkaline or lithium batteries, and the detector itself should be replaced every 10 years. Also, keep several fire extinguishers handy in strategic locations, such as in the kitchen and the garage. Also, be careful with fireplace or wood stove ashes, and do not store things around a gas-water heater. And, for you landlords out there, this includes your rental properties. The next thing that's important is to pre-plan an escape from your home. Be sure that all family members, including children, know at least two ways out of every room. And the one aspect that people tend to forget is that, once everyone's out, make sure they know where to go into a pre-planned, specific meeting place. Once you're out of the house, stay at that meeting place with each other and never go back inside for anyone or anything. Remember, "Fire Won't Wait: Plan Your Escape." So, with that in mind, on Saturday, October 15th, there will be a Fire Wise Festival to celebrate the 100th year of the National Fire Prevention Week and also the 78th birthday of, guess who, Smokey the Bear, who will be making an appearance. This street festival, outside the Founding Fathers Collective on Granite Street this year, will take place from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 15th. It will be fun for the whole family. And lastly, Watson Lake Park will be the location of the Big Sting, it's a country thing. This country music campout benefits the Shadows Foundation, which is dedicated to helping those individuals in need who are affected by life-threatening diseases, by providing services and financial assistance when they need it most. So, for more information, go to the website, thebigsting.com, for tickets and more info. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Now, we'll have an invocation by Father Raj Breidhoff with Sacred Heart Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God, our loving Father, send forth your Spirit of wisdom and understanding to fill the hearts and minds of all our council members and our civic leaders. May their judgments be right, their conscience glow with goodness, and their dedication to justice and mercy be clear. Strengthen them when they feel weak, enlighten them when they feel confused, protect them when they are unjustly opposed, and above all, give them love for the people whom they serve. May your guidance and presence always accompany them. We ask this in the name of Christ Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in pledging allegiance to our great republic and the flag that represents it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protam Rusig.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantalmy.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Moore and Councilman Tanyar excuse from the meeting.
We have a couple of proclamations today. First one is Homeless Awareness Month.
Is anyone from Agape House here today? Come on up. Whereas, since a staggering number of families and students in the Prescott and Prescott Valley area live in crisis and are homeless, Prescott, Arizona joins the nation in recognizing November as Homeless Awareness Month. Last year, the Prescott and Humboldt Unified School Districts identified 135 homeless students. And whereas, a healthy support system is necessary for rebuilding lives, life skill training, mentoring, discipleship, and support are essential for successful transformation to independent living for homeless families. And whereas, since its incorporation in 2013, Agape House of Prescott has provided an interim place to call home for families in the Prescott area. Agape House helps families in crisis rebuild, transform, and become self-sufficient members of society. They offer a safe place to raise their family and rebuild relationships. Agape House has an 86% success rate of families living independently one year after graduation from Agape House. Now, therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim November 2022 as Agape House Homeless Awareness Month, and encourages the citizens of Prescott to give back and become involved with Agape House of Prescott in their vision to provide a pathway to independence for families in crisis. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Protam, Council. I'm Mike Kimmel. I'm the Executive Director at Agape House, and we're very thankful for what the city has provided us. The Community Block Grant allows us to keep our buildings up, and just this great community, organizations, churches, schools, that just are part of the whole plan to bring families out of the wilderness, out of garages, out of cars. And on the end of our program, think of our program as boot camp. We want to take people in who are raw recruits. We want to put out people who are ready for the field, people ready to work. All of our adults have to work, kids have to be in school, and we're just honored to be in a community like this that'll support that, support us. And our graduates are people walking around, they're in business, they're people you may never know, but they've come from a challenging life to a life now where they're much better off, kids are in school and doing great. So, we just want to thank you all, thank the community for what you've done for us, and thank you for the proclamation.
Next is Fire Prevention Week. Councilwoman Cantalmy.
We have about 10 "whereas's."
I know, I saw it.
Or Fire Prevention Week, October 9th through the 15th. Whereas, the City of Prescott, Arizona, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Prescott. Sorry about that. Sorry about that, I should know better. Committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Prescott, and fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, with homes being the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas, fire prevention is a key part of community risk reduction, which ensures that the fire service is committed to a comprehensive strategy to address hazards in the community, and whereas, citizens are encouraged to be an active part of fire prevention by ensuring their property is prepared for wildfires, and whereas, neighborhoods are encouraged to be a partner with the Prescott Area Wildland Urban Interface Commission, which is called POWIC, to implement fire-wise practices. And whereas, smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors provide early warning of fire and dangerous gas presence in the home, and whereas, having these functional detectors in every home has proven to save lives, and whereas, Prescott's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fire and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas, the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait: Plan Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us that we need to install and test these warning devices to provide for early detection and to provide occupants time to get out safely. And whereas, these devices may chirp, very annoying, this may mean the batteries are running low and need to be replaced, and whereas, this year's campaign also addresses special considerations for the deaf and hard-of-hearing, along with information about carbon monoxide alarms. Therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim October 9th through the 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout this city, and urge all residents to install and test their smoke and carbon detectors monthly and change batteries at least once a year, practice their home and workplace evacuation plans, and participate in the many public safety activities offered by the City of Prescott Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2022. Thank you. Yeah, and here's your coffee. Did you want to say anything?
Real quick. There you go. Thank you. Mayor, Members of the Council, Tom Knapp, Deputy Fire Chief and Fire Marshal. This is kind of pointing at, this is the 100th year of NFPA's Fire Prevention Week this year, so a big celebration. It's ranged, but we keep coming back to smoke detectors, alerting systems, and evacuation plans. Across the state, from January until today, there have been seven fatalities in residential homes. It's amazing with the technology we have. We've been very fortunate here, and we continue to be aggressive with our outreach and education as Mayor Protam read about the upcoming event Saturday at Founding Fathers Collective. Should be a big show and a lot of education. We encourage you all to come out. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, we'll move on to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. I do not have any green speaker cards at the moment. Is there anyone that wishes to address council? No. Okay.
Very good, then. That will move on to the consent agenda. Does any of the council want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Hearing no objections, and I'll entertain a motion for consent agenda approval.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through 8K.
Second. I have a motion as second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
All right, the next item is liquor license.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 9 liquor license, store liquor license application from Arif Hakamalius and Momini, applicant for Mike's Mini Market, location 924 East Gurley Street. The application fees have been paid, the signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the applications and determined that they are in compliance. No public comments have been received, and the applicant did let me know this morning that he would not be able to attend the meeting today, so he's not present.
Well, I know Mike's Mini Mark has a couple of locations, so we'll move on with recommended action.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license number 206539 for an acquisition of control Series 9 liquor store, liquor license application for Mike's Mini Market, location 924 East Gurley Street.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
All righty. Now, we get to move on to the regular agenda.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-1801, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Arizona, ending the three-quarters of 1% transaction privilege tax dedicated to the payment of the city's unfunded liability to the Arizona Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, PSPRS.
Thank you, Sarah.
This is certainly a monumental day.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mark Woodfell, Budget and Finance Director, and I totally agree, it's a great day we all have been waiting for. Just wanted to go through a few slides, kind of go through where we were and kind of some of the events that helped resolve this significant problem for the city and how severe the problem really was, because, you know, it was five years ago, and I think a lot of us might have forgotten how bad it was. So, five years ago, we were facing an ever-increasing liability on our pension. It was up at almost $87, $86, $87 million. What that meant was our contribution rate was up for police and fire. Police and fire, this is the amount that we had to pay to PSPRS for each dollar we paid our employees, and it was almost 100%. So, every dollar we paid the employee, we had to pay PSPRS a dollar for their pension. Obviously, that was devastating in the general fund. We did an election in 2016, which was, you know, driven by the need and staff alone, not wide support on the council for it, and again, it failed pretty soundly back then. And then, we came back and said, you know, the problem's still there, it's getting worse. After that election, we had brownouts of fire stations. For those who weren't here, we reduced hours at the library, we had to lay off police personnel affecting patrol routes. We had to do a lot of things. We reduced all sorts of things, and again, didn't know where to go with it. So, the council again looked at it, and after looking at several solutions, they came up with this approach. Here's one of the slides we used, which was a bit controversial at the time. The yellow lines show our annual contributions out of the general fund to the pension. The red line that shoots across is the projection for the future, and the two colors of blue, I'm not real great with colors, but show what the payments would be with the tax, the proposed tax. It would reduce the light blue being the normal cost and the other blue being the pay-down of the unfunded liability. And I point out here, at the time of the solution formulation by the subcommittee, it was anticipated the council or the city would give, take $4 million out of its current fund balance, and then the tax would be in place, and that would pay the unfunded liabilities we went forward to free up the monies in the general fund for other needs, new fire stations, other operating costs that were out there. Throughout the election, though, so it was formulated, I'm sorry, here's the proposition 443. It was to bring the tax in place for 10 years, or when the unfunded liability was $1.5 million on an actuarial basis. And with the support of council, but more specifically Billy Orr, Mayor Protam, you know, just really brought this across the finish line with Councilman Sishka and the group of citizens, really got this passed for us, saved our city's service levels, for sure, and it passed at 44% saying yes, which is almost as many people that said no to the one previously. With that in place, this is a schedule of what we did. During the elections, council looked at a lot of different things and decided, you know, a lot of the needs, the service needs and other things could be put off until this was put aside. So, in addition to the dedicated tax, we didn't do $4 million, now the general fund, we did $11 million. We also did the proceeds from the sale of the hotshot fire station, as well as the buggy. We got the state to help contribute to the liability created by the unfortunate line of duty deaths of our hotshots. Again, that was on a state fire. They committed, over this time, we went back to them several times as things change in actuaries. They've committed a total of $10 million to date, as of the end of fiscal year '22. They've paid six. They've actually made the payment for fiscal '23 already, so that's another million, so they've paid seven, and we will get a million a year for the next three years unless it gets pulled out of the budget bill. And we've taken all of those things into account in projecting where we are with the pension liability. In addition to the additional payments out of the general fund, council further decided that the unfunded liability, ARC, or the Annual Required Contribution, would continue to be paid out of the general fund, but not contemplated at the time of the tax. That coupled with, stronger than projected, obviously, sales tax. We've had sales tax growth over the last five years that averaged 8% a year, which is incredible growth through a pandemic. For, it's incredible growth, period, but especially through a pandemic and recession of sorts. So, all those added up to the good news that we have taken our, oop, and my mouse is being weird. We'll go back. We've taken the unfunded liability from $86 million, 30% funded, down to the $8 million. This is an estimate I got from PSPRS last week. Have not seen the actuarial report. We're going to go with what they have projected here. Brings it down to $8.3 million, or we're 94% funded. That's on an actuarial basis, and again, we're going to talk, I want to talk just a little bit about the challenges of trying to determine when we're funded. There's a lot of headwinds in an actuarial report, and I want to talk just a little bit about those, because obviously, we have $8.3 million. You know, that's about what we're going to hopefully receive in the first six months of this year, but in addition, we have that state money. But there are also other complicating factors here in determining what the liability is. If we look at their estimate of actuarial value, we're $8.3. If we look at their estimation of our market value of assets, which are $137 million, not $141, we're still have an outstanding balance of $12 million. So, that's something to keep in mind as we did our projection forward. Again, we did count the additional $3 million that's coming from the state, that it will continue to be coming. So, looking at what this looks like on a graph, and again, it looks as we projected, only it came down quicker than before. You can see the liability went up, and we pulled the liability down relatively quickly. Go the right way here. Consequently, our rate, our contribution out of the general fund has also gone down. You can see here, I put lines on there showing the points of the election. Where will those two lines level out? Hopefully, they'll level out near normal cost. Normal cost of the pensions in FY '23 are 12.5% for Tier 1 and Tier 2, and Tier 3 is at .9. That is about where ASRS is, the 12%. So, they should level out right at that green line, which is the Arizona State Retirement. So, this is all great news, and again, saved the city's service levels from the work of the citizens and Mayor Protam and the council at the time. Just real quick, not to be too negative, we have some, we'll call them headwinds on our liability. This is a graph of the earnings rate for PSPR, P-E-S-P-R-S, from 2000 till '22, their current earnings rate. That's the blue line. The red line is their actuarial projected rate, which is gradually trending down. Frankly, I'd like to see it trending down just a little quicker, but again, once we stop the tax, every tick down increases our liability significantly. As we look at that rate, last year was a great year, they had 25-plus percent interest. This year, they're looking at negative 4. So, what does that mean? That is negative 4, so obviously, negative 4, but it's 11%, 11.2% below their projection, our actuarial value. So, if we didn't smooth these interest rates, that would be a hit of almost $16 million in unfunded liability, poof, in one year. But we smoothed it over seven years. So, the orange line out there is actually the smoothed interest rate. And again, that's not really how it works, the actual smoothing is done on the dollars, so it's dependent on how much money is in the trusts at the time. But to give you an idea, their average rate is close to the 7.2. Another complicating factor, this is a graph I showed you last December when we had the last actuarial, I apologize, it wasn't in your packets. Just to reiterate, there are no new employees going into Tier 1 and Tier 2. Tier 1 and Tier 2 are dead plans. So, we are not going to get any more active people, we're only going to have retirees and beneficiaries from here on out. And even if we did have people going into, and you can see how small our two trusts are, they're not actuarially sound. Any anomalies, movement from the actuarially assumed values greatly impact our liability. You know, you just don't have the population to dilute the impact of somebody living 10 years longer, which we all hope they live as long as possible, but in a big population, that all evens out. But when you're dealing with only 133 and 131, those spikes can affect our rate as we go. In spite of all this caution, I still feel that we will be at the 1.5, especially when we consider the payments coming from the state in the next three years by the December 31st date, which is in the ordinance of this year. So, I've put together a slide of steps today, again, apologize, it wasn't in your packet. Our next steps are council to adopt this ordinance, which will eliminate the tax December 31st. We will work with Department of Revenue. As we all know, Department of Revenue took over administration of the city's taxes several years ago, and whether you liked it or not, it's the way it is, and we got to work through them, which is why we have to address this today, because there's lead time that they need to do anything. In addition to what they're going to do for taxpayer information, staff is going to reach out on social media, we're going to reach out on the city website and local papers as we get closer in the November-December timeframe, to make sure that local businesses and local customers are aware that our tax rate is going down. And we need to update our pension policy, which we do every year, but this year is going to be a major update as we look at it in the FY '24 budget process. And part of that update, you know, the citizens trusted council, and the, obviously, the system group that helped pass it really trusted us to make this work. So, as part of that update, staff is recommending that we put together a PSPRS stabilization fund to address these future market changes, or change in actuary assumptions that are going to create liabilities. So, we will be formulating that with council as we go through the budget process. The policy is going to include, how much of a reserve do we want? Do we want 10% of our liability in reserves so that when we have bad years, or they decide to come up with a more realistic earnings level, we have a liability, we want to get that off the books, because, you know, we don't want to get back in the position we were at. So, what will that level be? How will the fund be funded? What are we going to do? Are we going to, where are we going to come up with that money? Staff has some ideas, and we'll talk through those with council as we go through the budget process. And again, the policy will also determine how that reserve will be used, and what it'll look like. Are we going to set up 115 IRS trusts? Are we just going to hold it in the general fund? There's pros and cons to all of these, and not something you want to do quickly in a meeting, so it's something we will include in our budget workshops as we go through the process. So, with that, just, this is a graph that I use in Citizens Academy. I thought it was relevant to show a comparison of our tax rate to our local communities, as well as the service levels that our citizens get for that. Again, as you can see, we're at 9.1 right now. January 1 of 2023, we're going to be back to 8.35, which is .83 lower than PV at 9.18, and it's full 2% lower than the Chino Valley at 10.35. And again, with that lower tax rate, you have even lower property taxes, because we provide fire and EMS service with that. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions, but I just kind of wanted to run through some of the history and where we're going and...
Well, thank you, Mark. I know the projections showing an $8.1 million liability. We have to keep that in perspective, because... We have to keep that in perspective because that's through June thirtieth. So by the time we expire the tax at the end of the year, we'll have six more months of tax collections to go against that eight point one. And we've been averaging a little over a million dollars a month in our tax collections for the PSPRS dedicated tax. We also have to think about the fact that we were extremely fortunate because of the federal, the Supreme Court's Wayfair decision that happened before the pandemic occurred. And that allowed us to continue to, or at least begin to, collect tax on internet sales that we didn't have knowledge of prior to the imposition of that four four three tax. That helped us tremendously. We also had a rather robust economy under the previous presidential administration that allowed not only internet sales to be quite profound and significant, but even things in our local community, whether it was bed tax, hospitality, restaurant revenues, all those things contributed to the success of reaching this one point five million dollar trigger so quickly. But you're right, we will have to continue to closely monitor this because some of the deficiencies in the investment policies within the PSPRS and the state still exist. I think there's an over reliance on private equity investments that are projected to be rather painful when we see the returns by the end of the year. So we've discussed the option of a one fifteen tax option. We discussed that probably five years ago in council. And now there's an opportunity to even have the state treasurer help to manage that option as well. So I think even though we're running into a rather painful economic condition and with investments, I think we'll still be able to manage our future general fund and our PSPRS liability in a manageable way. So thank you, Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, can you imagine what it would look like today if we wouldn't have done what we did? I would, Mayor, I'd like to recognize the citizen group that spearheaded this thing, Stanford Prescott Yes on four four three. So would you all stand up, please, just momentarily? Thank you so, so, so much. You know, and I'm really glad that we were all wrong on the timeline. There were folks who didn't think we should have done this at all, and where would we be? Billy Orr, who is our former Mayor Protem and my big sister from a duffer, another mother, she's out there watching in television land. And I have to tell you, she figured out that we should do, we'd do this in seven years. And at the time, we thought, oh, my gosh, if we do it in seven years. So I said, no, we're going to do it in six years. And we were both wrong. We were all wrong. We did it in five years, which is absolutely incredible. You know, that's, that's looking into the future. We're not having to brown out fire stations. We're not having to have lower police and fire levels in employees. You know, parks and rec was really devastated in some areas because of what was happening. The library was closed on certain days. And so what you did as Stanford Prescott Yes on four four three was monumental, and it was probably one of the most awesome examples of bipartisanship I've ever seen. There was people in the middle, people on the right, people on the left. We all got together to do this. And so thank you, Mayor Protem, Billy Orr, for being the heart and soul of this organization. We love you. And, you know, I just have to pay homage to one other individual, and that's deceased
We're really sorry that Billy couldn't be here. I'm a very poor substitute.
rocker Tom Petty, because he gave us our theme song, which was Won't Back Down.
Billy wanted to make sure that we all recognized the people of Prescott, the employees, the
So thank you very much, Mayor.
firefighters and the police for the sacrifices and difficulties that they had prior to the
Well, thank you, Councilman, and I agree, this is a monumental achievement.
passage of this. We were so in difficult times seven years ago when we started this project, and we
And as we have a significantly lower tax rate in the city of Prescott, I'm sure our automobile dealers are going to be very happy.
are today so proud because you're right, it was not a partisan effort.
There's a lot of people are going to be driving here to buy a car because a lower tax rate
It was a community effort that brought us here.
a percent or more makes a big difference in those big purchases.
And Billy wanted to make sure that we remembered that.
Huge difference.
I want to make sure that we remember that it was a wonderful group of people.
I think we'll see more activity in our major retailers.
We actually had a lot of fun doing it, and especially for Billy and for Steve, who spearheaded
Can you imagine getting in a longer line at Costco? But it might happen. And I think this will also contribute to a resurrection of our gateway mall and the
the project. We thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peg. activities up there as well.
Sherri.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and thank you for allowing us to come up and speak
So it's a part of the Laffer curve. Sometimes you can lower your taxes and end up with more revenue. So I'm excited to entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I move.
I'm sorry, you have a couple of comment cards.
Oh.
Peg.
and in support of Stanford Prescott Yes on four four three.
Okay, Billy.
It is a great day, and I just wanted to kind of take everybody back. When we first met, it was, there was twenty members of our committee, and we sat down and we tried to figure out how were we going to tackle this problem. And unfortunately, the only solution we came to was that we figured we needed more revenue. So we decided to come forward with the tax. And we faced great opposition, not only from individuals, but from groups in our town. But we all came together, like Peg said, we, we put everything aside because we wanted to protect Prescott, and we knew that's what was at stake here. And we knew we couldn't let the state handle it because they don't do things in a very timely manner. And we knew that filing bankruptcy, doing nothing was not an option. So we, we came together and we proclaimed Steve and Billy as our public spokesman. And they went out and we, all the committee members that are here and some that aren't here, that couldn't be here today. And I co-chaired the event, but my other partner that co-chaired, Celia Jurgensen, she could not be here today. So I wanted to give her credit because she was a big help also in when we led this group the way we did. But, you know, once the public understood, and with Steve and Billy as our public spokesman, they went out and they, they spoke in a way that the public understood what was at stake. And they realized that the people of Prescott did not want to sacrifice their police and fire services. They did not want to sacrifice the library services or any other city services. And so we want to say thank you to the citizens of Prescott. We also want to thank you, say thank you to our tourists who came into the town, and we benefited from them being here and spending money in our beautiful town. So thank you again for allowing us. It is a great day, and I wish Billy could be here, but you know, let's thank Steve and Billy as our official spokesman. Steve, you did a lot too, so it's been great. And for Billy, we love her and we wish she was here, but we wish her the best. And as we continue forward, we hope that things will level out and we'll be able as a city to continue to have, not go any further with the PSPRS, that it'll, it'll all be fine. So thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
That's all, Mayor. Now you can do the motion.
Great. Now I can very proudly entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number two zero two-two dash one eight zero one.
Second. You have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes five zero.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, moving on to item B.
Adoption of ordinance number two zero two-two dash one eight one three, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Prescott City Code Title One Eleven Building Regulations, Chapter Three Dash Ten Dash Eight F Incentive Program.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Gwen Roach, Public Works Deputy Director. That's a hard act to follow, but, but we do have some good things to talk about this afternoon. The city staff has been working on an overhaul, if you will, of our rebate incentive program for water conservation for the city. We've done extensive research. We've compared Prescott's rebates to other communities' rebates. We evaluated the effectiveness of the city's rebates for the last three to five years. And we went out to local retailers and suppliers to find out, what are they charging for these things? You know, how much, how much does our incentive really incentivize people? Because what do they really cost? So I want to give credit here to K Sido, our Water Resource Project Manager, who did the majority of the legwork here. Our goal was to reach an amount for our incentive that rebated somewhere between twenty and forty percent of the cost of the device. That was our goal, so it would truly be an incentive to people to do it. Every property still has a maximum rebate amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, and that credit shows up on their water bill. They don't actually receive a check, although that was debated somewhat in the Water Issue Subcommittee meeting. Ultimately, staff did not, is not recommending that we write checks to people, but rather that we give them credits on their water bill because this is about water. See if I can go to the next slide. So I have a, an abbreviated presentation from what we showed at the Water Issue Subcommittee. Today, I'm going to talk about the actual devices that we're recommending be changed in the incentives program, and then I'll give an overview at the end. So the, the actual devices that we're recommending changes to are rainwater cisterns and barrels, turf removal, toilets and commercial urinals. So when we looked at other communities, when it came to rainwater harvesting, this is what we call active rainwater harvesting, when you collect the water from your roof and it goes into different kinds of barrels or cisterns, and then you use it later to water your garden or water your landscaping. We can only find one other community in the state that did that, and that was the city of Flagstaff. They give a hundred dollars for every thousand gallons of capacity, up to five hundred dollars. Here at the city of Prescott, we incentivize at fifty cents a gallon, also up to five hundred dollar maximum. And they have to have at least a hundred gallons of capacity in order to receive this rebate. So how have we done in the last five or six years with rain barrels? Not too bad. We, on average, ten to twenty rebates per year, we give out for this particular device. But the effectiveness of those rain barrels is based on the size of the device as well as the frequency of storms, because these are entirely dependent on Mother Nature. If we don't get good rain, they don't really, aren't as effective. And that's why you see the gallons save very dramatically, even though the number of rebates we gave was consistent, because the sizes of the rain barrels varied. Here's a few examples of some of the different kinds of barrels that people can use or have used. I thought it was interesting, when I talked to some folks about this, they thought it just had to be a big old ugly barrel. And really, there's so many different options out there that people can choose, that are aesthetically pleasing, that can work into their landscaping or their backyard. And you can see the cost of the devices varies widely as well. And you will see at the end of this, we're going to recommend a two-tiered rain barrel rebate based on the size of the barrel. I want to talk a little bit about turf. Turf is the number one highest outdoor water use and the number one return, return of water savings of any of the incentives that we offer. The rebates vary amongst various communities in the state from twenty-five cents a square foot to fifty cents a square foot, or in some cases, they just simply offer a flat dollar amount regardless of the size of the area. Although many of the communities did require different minimum size area in order for, to receive the rebate, and we have that here in Prescott as well. We require two hundred square feet of residential to be removed and a thousand square feet of commercial to be removed in order to receive this incentive. You'll see at the end of the presentation that we're going to recommend that the minimum square foot areas be removed. The goal here is to reduce turf because it is the highest water user of all outdoor So how do we do in terms of turf rebates? We average about ten to thirteen of them a year, but as I said, they save more water than any other device. In twenty twenty-one, Prescott Unified School District removed the turf from their football field. If I could shout this from the rooftops, I would. This, this was like a golden moment in terms of rebates. Their water savings was three point eight million gallons a year. Three point eight million, that's eleven and a half acre feet of water a year, simply by removing the grass from their football field. So we did exceed the maximum amount for them. We do have an exception in the policy, when the water savings greatly benefits the community, that we can exceed the five hundred dollar maximum, and we did that for Prescott High School. So kudos to them for making that change. So how much area is five hundred square feet? You know, it seems, seems like a big number. Well, it's really about two and a half parking spaces, right? A thousand square feet is five parking spaces. Just to put it in perspective for folks, this picture on the right is in front of a local business. I'm not going to point out where it is specifically, but it's got twelve parking spaces in front of it, and it's just purely unused grass. It's three thousand square feet of grass. So we talked about toilets quite a bit. Yavapai County Contractors Association came into the conversation when we were talking about toilet rebates and asked us to consider a third-tier toilet rebate incentive. Across the board, in terms of how we compare to other communities, somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred dollars does seem to be the average rebate for a toilet. In the city of Flagstaff, they give different rebate amounts based on whether it's residential, commercial, or they actually offer up to fifty percent of the cost for a hotel, if a hotel replaces toilets, up to a hundred and fifty-eight dollars apiece. In twenty nineteen, this is a, this is how we did in the last six years. In twenty nineteen, we did a city hall retrofit, and we installed low-flow toilets in all the bathrooms here in city hall, flushing up at one point one gallon and down at one point six. In twenty seventeen, you can see there's a hundred and forty-two rebates for the one point six gallon flush, and at that time, that was what we were shooting for, was one point six. The Hasiyampa Inn installed forty-seven new toilets at the lower amount. So there, there is and there can be interest among the commercial users in the community, and that's one of the things we're going to start doing some public outreach in some of these bigger water users in the community to see if we can get them to replace toilets. Toilets are our most popular rebate in terms of how many rebates we get for them, and they're the second highest water savings in the program. Here's just a little bit of a price comparison for you on some of the different toilets. You can see the one point O flush is somewhere between three hundred and twenty-six and six hundred and seventy-one dollars, which is pretty pricey. That's why we're suggesting a three-tiered rebate. The one point two eight single flushes have a price somewhere between ninety-nine and three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And the dual flush, one point O slash one point two eight, are somewhere between a hundred sixty-nine and two fifty-one. So when it comes to urinals, that's not one that we see in terms of a high number of rebate requests, but the city In 2019, we did a City Hall retrofit, and we installed low-flow toilets in all the bathrooms here in City Hall, flushing up at 1.1 gallon and down at 1.6. In 2017, you can see there's 142 rebates for the 1.6 gallon flush, and at that time, that was what we were shooting for, was 1.6. The Hasiyampa Inn installed 47 new toilets at the lower amount. So, there is and there can be interest among the commercial users in the community, and that's one of the things we're going to start doing some public outreach in some of these bigger water users in the community, to see if we can get them to replace toilets. Toilets are our most popular rebate, in terms of how many rebates we get for them, and they're the second-highest water savings in the program. Here's just a little bit of a price comparison for you on some of the different toilets. You can see the 1.0 flush is somewhere between $326 and $671, which is pretty pricey. That's why we're suggesting a three-tiered rebate. The 1.28 single flushes have a price somewhere between $99 and $379. And the dual flush, 1.0 slash 1.28, are somewhere between $169 and $251. So, when it comes to urinals, that's not one that we see in terms of a high number of rebate requests, but the city of Prescott does offer a $50 rebate if it's one quart or less. What we found out through our research is that the new EPA standard is half that. So, we're going to change our standard to require the half-quart or the .125 gallon per flush as a new EPA standard. When we did the retrofit here at City Hall, we've discovered that we only use 125 gallons of water a year in our restrooms here for urinals. So, significantly reduced the amount of water. Here's our six-year average, not looking too good, except for in 2017, when Embry-Riddle replaced five units. And as I said, in 2019, the city did replace several urinals here in City Hall, but we didn't get a rebate, so it's not on the chart. So, what are we recommending as staff? We are looking at recommending that water cistern barrels with 50 to 65 gallon capacity still receive 50 cents per gallon of storage. That meets our 20 to 40% rebate cost rebate. But barrels that are bigger than that, 75 gallons or more, that they receive a dollar per gallon of storage, because the cost savings is not as good for the larger barrels. So, we are recommending that larger barrels receive a dollar per gallon of storage. There's still a maximum of $500. And before someone asks, no, no one has ever hit $500 for this particular rebate. When it comes to turf removal, onsite turf removal, and we did add this language that also in an adjacent public right-of-way, because a lot of times, people will landscape all the way out to the road, even though it's not their property, and they will do plantings and landscaping and grass and all kinds of things, they're watering it. Whether they own that land underneath or not, they're watering it. So, we added the language "in an adjacent public right-of-way," and we're requesting that we increase the turf removal rebate to $1 per square foot, and we remove the minimum area size requirement, because any removal of grass is water savings. When it comes to the toilets, as I mentioned, we're recommending a three-tiered approach. If you buy the most expensive toilet at the 1.0 gallon per flush, $150 rebate. If you buy a 1.0 slash 1.28 dual flush, it's $125. And for a 1.28 single flush, $100 rebate. And again, those amounts fall within that 20 to 40% rebate amount of the cost of the device. And finally, we're recommending that commercial urinals be reduced to the EPA standard of .125 gallons per flush, and that we increase the rebate amount to $100 per device. All of the other rebate amounts, staff is recommending remain the same. They fell well within the guidelines of the 20 to 40%. They're very popular and well-used, and so we're not recommending changes on any of those. I will say that we clarified some language regarding the septic incentive. We want to make sure that people know the septic incentive is available not only for toilets, but also for washing machines. That's also been very effective. I didn't have it on the chart here, but we rebate about 40 septic requests a year for the last two years, and it's only been in effect for two years. So, 40 in 2021, almost 40 this year, and we're not even done with this year yet, so maybe a little bit higher by the end of the year. But that's been a very effective rebate as well. Let's see. So, overall, how do we do in terms of our rebate program, in terms of water savings? On average, we save over, just a little over 2 million gallons a year are saved. So, that's cumulative over five years. It's 10 million gallons. It's 2 million gallons a year we're saving for the life of that device. It's not a forever number. It's for the life of that device. You can see that turf is the number-one water savings at 847,000 gallons every year. Toilets are the second-highest at 772, and rain barrels are very popular, 243,000 gallons of water saved on an annual basis. And then your drip irrigation comes in at 103. And washing machines are on the low side, but they're very new to the program, and I think they're just becoming more, it's becoming widely known. Staff has been out in some retail locations. We've given them lists of our washing machines that we rebate for, and we've asked them to present that to customers when they're buying washing machines and tell them about our rebate program. So, we're trying to do partnerships with the local suppliers as well, to help get the word out that we do rebate for these kinds of devices. And that's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, I just want to start off by thanking you and Public Works and certainly Kay Sido for spearheading this program to revamp it, or build on it, I should say, I guess. And I also want to compliment staff on having an attitude of working with Sandy Griffiths and the folks at YCCA to kind of get some insight from the private sector, to understand where the real value is for consumers who are looking at doing these things. So, I think that's great. I love to see those kind of partnerships flourish. And I know that not everything Sandy wanted is in this, but I think that Sandy understands it's a step, a significant step, in a good direction. One of the things that came up at Water Issues Subcommittee was a discussion around, we have a certain amount allocated for this program every year. And if I'm not mistaken, it's 40,000, is it 40,000 now?
So, in fiscal year '23, it's $40,000, but the staff adjusts that number based on how the previous year did.
Right.
So, if we do really well, we budget a little bit more monies into the program. I can tell you that in 2020, we rebated $47,000. In 2021, it was $39,000. And this year, we still have two months to go. We're already at $38,000, so that's very positive that people are retrofitting devices.
And so, my understanding from what you said of Water Issues Subcommittee, and I think this is worth mentioning now, is that there's not a cap, where if someone goes to do their rebate program and they buy the toilet, or they buy the washing machine, or, you know, God, it would be wonderful if they did all of it, right? And they came to the city and said, hey, here's my rebate. We're not going to say, oh, no, you're too late. Like, we've already spent all our money. We're going to go the extra mile and make sure we incentivize them to do those kind of retrofits.
That is correct. We don't turn anyone away, as long as they meet the criteria of the program.
Right.
So, for like the washing machines, they have to buy one that's on the list.
Right.
That sort of thing, but otherwise, we do not turn them away.
I guess another question I have for you is, I noticed that on the graphics in this presentation, and then at the presentations at Water Issues Subcommittee, that some of the neighboring communities here aren't listed in those programs. Is there a regional framework for other communities here in the kind of shared AMA to participate in best practices around water conservation?
So, to my knowledge, Prescott Valley and Chino Valley do not have water conservation incentive program, but staff has been in communication with staff in the town of Prescott Valley. They're very interested in our program, and we've sent them information, so it's our hope that we can help them launch a similar program. But when the program first started in 2006, it was primarily meant to retrofit older homes. Prescott Valley and Chino Valley, they're not quite as old a communities as we are. That may be part of why they haven't done it yet. But our program has evolved over time. We no longer just give incentives for retrofitting. We also now give incentives to buy a brand-new washing machine, even if you're in a brand-new home. If you buy a washing machine that uses low water, we will give you a rebate, so...
I'm glad to hear that staff is working with other communities, because I think it's a real opportunity, since we are all in the same AMA, you know, the active management area for the aquifer. It would be great to see Prescott Valley and Chino Valley kind of take from our best practices that we've... Because as I said at the Water Issues Subcommittee, I think there's two components that are really successful to our water program. The first one is the tiered water rate system. I think you tax what you want less of, and in this case, we're incentivizing what we want more of, which is active conservation. So, I'm glad to hear that staff is in communication with those other neighboring communities. The last thing I'll ask you about, and I think I sent an email about this, but the new governors with a program that came out in the last legislation session, he talked about, or it talks about this idea, and Selina Bliss kind of sent an email around that kind of talked about this from a member of the legislature, talking about the idea that there's monies that exist to go after, for municipalities to do conservation programs. And I'm curious if there's not a vehicle for us to kind of build on what we're doing here with that. And I know it's probably premature, so if you don't have a good answer, that's fine. I'm just putting it out there for food for thought.
Absolutely. And staff will investigate any opportunity to promote conservation, because to your point, water conservation is one of the main drivers of keeping our AMA whole.
Thank you.
And I will make a comment, that I've already convened one meeting with the other surrounding municipalities to see if we can agree on some of these very basic but effective conservation programs that some of our neighbors are not yet adopting. So, my hope is that we can at least agree on some of these things broadly, that affect our AMA, and it seems like at least a minimal first step that we can agree on. Councilman, Mayor Protem Ruusing.
Thank you. I just want to clarify something. This program is available not to just people that live in the city limits. It's to all water users that receive water from the city of Prescott. Like, for example, we supply an area in Chino Valley. They would be people in the water service area. We have people in the county, for example, Stringfield Ranch, when they get up and going. So, it's not just our people that are actually in the city limits. It's everyone that gets a bill from the city of Prescott.
That is correct. All water users from the city of Prescott.
Okay. So, I just wanted to thank you and the staff for refreshing our rebate program, raising awareness about our water conservation, and also incentivizing people. And I just wanted to thank the people of Prescott and people outside of the city limits, who are doing such a good job, because they understand how important water is, and they're voluntarily conserving the water. So, I just wanted to thank you. Good job.
Councilwoman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, I don't know if you mentioned this before while I was out, but of the cities we surveyed, how does our program stack up to what you found in the cities that you surveyed?
Well, I will say that Governor Bruce Babbitt gave the city of Prescott a wonderful compliment at a recent water conference. He said the city of Prescott has the most robust water conservation incentive program in the state of Arizona. So, that's coming from former Governor Bruce Babbitt. That was a huge kudos and gave the staff a great thumbs up. So, we do very well in terms of our comparisons. Toilets were widely popular in the rebates, and so were turf, but as I mentioned earlier, they're the top-two returns on water. But the city does offer the widest variety of devices that can be rebated that we found out there.
Okay. Thank you very much, and congratulations, by the way. I do know that, you know, on the Water Issues Committee, we talked about rebates for hot water circulating systems. A true hot water circulating system, you know, is really tough to retrofit in an older house, you know, unless you really commit to it. But there is a valve that you can put on the farthest sink that you need to, in your house, from the water heater, that is a lot less expensive and would also allow people who are in older homes, like Kathy in my house is 42 years old, and we put one in, and it works pretty doggone well. So, Sandy, do you have anything to say about those valves?
You're right on track. Sorry.
Okay. So, what I'm wondering is, you know, could we expand our rebate to include those valves that could be put on an older home? Because there's a lot more older homes here than there are new homes.
We can look at that, Councilwoman Shishka, and come back with a recommendation to the Subcommittee for you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
What's the name of the valve? What do you call it?
You know, I really don't know, Kathy, but I do know that it's pretty effective. It's not, I don't think it does as good of a job as a hot water circulating system, but it does almost as good. And I think that it would be worth it for us to include those, because it would be a lot more, they would be used a lot more than the actual true hot water circulating system.
Anything that saves money.
Yeah.
Councilwoman, can you tell me?
Hi, Gwen. Thank you for that information. You know, this is really actually good on a lot of different fronts, because you're kind of bringing it right down to the homeowner, too. This is an opportunity for them to do their part, and I think many people are happy to do that. You mentioned outreach. How are you going to get this information out, other than maybe in the water bill? I'm not even sure what you're going to do.
Well, we have a variety of ways that we reach out to the public. We're actually working on a new website that will strictly be for water conservation at different age levels, so we'll have a lot of information. If you go to our main website, it'll redirect you to the new water conservation website. Kay Sido and Leslie Grazer also go out into the public. We're asked to speak frequently to different groups about water savings. And as I mentioned, you know, Kay puts her hat on and says, I'll see you in four hours, and she's out and about at different businesses, talking to people. So, we can put small inserts in the water bills, but we're limited in how much text we can actually put in there, and there are a lot of other messages that take priority. So, we have found that face-to-face is the best way.
Yeah.
That's the best way, yeah.
The other thing I was going to ask, too, is, is it possible to do some target marketing, if you will, to, let's say, the builders? The builders, and you know, Sandy knows, as a builder, we do have requirements, actually, for low-flow toilets and things like that. But some of these other rebates, they might be interested in that. And also, if a homeowner walks in to get a permit, could there be a piece of paper that has all of this on it, that you hand out to them in a packet when they receive their permit? Because sometimes, the builders may not pass that information on to the end-user, you know, the person that's hired them to build the home, because there are several things that they could do and ask for if they were aware of it.
Those are great suggestions. I'll pass those on to the staff.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or concerns? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Well, then, I guess we'll entertain a motion to move this ordinance forward.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-1813.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
All right. Item 10C.
Approval of City Contract Number 2021-181A3, an amendment to City Contract Number 2021-181 with Van Contracting, Inc., for additional road construction associated with Miller-Ellie Road.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works. I'll give you a little background. The project, this is part of the Sun Dog Truck Main Phase C2 contract that was awarded by council on June 22 of 2021. We experienced almost eight months of delays in delivery of materials. The project didn't get underway in earnest until January of this year. That kind of put us behind the eight ball in the timing. You guys all remember Miller Valley Road from approximately February, March, through about two weeks before rodeo started. It was definitely on everybody's radar. The extra work we had to do was due to, we found very poor subgrade conditions in the road. We had to do a lot of blasting. We found concrete of various shapes and sizes buried in the road out there that nobody could anticipate, as well as water. When you start shooting rock, you'll have a 10C to open up an aquifer that, you know, water finds a way. And so, we ran into a lot of areas where our subgrade was poor, not good for putting a new road on. Our subgrade repair number, our unsuitable material number doubled for this contract. Due to the immediate vicinity of the rodeo grounds and the timeframe we were in, we gave the contractor a deadline of basically 10 days before the rodeo started to have Miller Valley paved. And in the interest of how much extra work we had to do, and all the utility work we've done in that corridor, it was staff determined, worked with the contractor, that it would be in our best interest to pave the entire width of Miller Valley Road from just north of Shimmer, all the way to the Miller Creek Bridge. Now that all the utilities, water, sewer, Unisource did their gas relocations in that corridor as well, we shouldn't have to go in there and do anything other than routine pavement maintenance in that corridor for a significant amount of time. And as you all know, with the fast-food restaurants in that location and the other businesses, it's a highly-traveled corridor, especially at lunchtime. So, we shouldn't have to do anything in that area, other than pavement maintenance, routine pavement maintenance for the next 20 years. The amendment amount that we're asking, requesting today is $264,443.73. And funding for the amendment is available in FY '23 from both the wastewater and the streets fund. And with that, I will be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions or concerns? Mayor Protem.
Oh, I just wanted to say, I drove that road frequently this summer and the piles of dirt and the deepness of the trenches. It was a huge project and I was worried about whether or not it would be finished by rodeo. But I just wanted to thank you and Fan Construction for doing such a great job in getting it done on time. So thank you.
Yeah, no, even though it was a substantial cost for amending the original contract, just the fact that the, we've seen so many engineer estimates and the actual award costs are substantially above that. So having to wait eight months for all the material to show up and then adding the cost of escalating labor and then discovering a lot of this subsurface conditions. When you talk about a percentage, it's probably, what, about 5% or 6% over the original contract?
It's right. Yeah, 6.2%.
Right. So, I mean, we've seen numbers substantially higher than that when we're putting an engineer's estimate before we go out to bid for road projects and infrastructure. So from percentage perspective, it's really quite reasonable, even though it's painful to look at $264,000. But we certainly got that solved and fortunately, when they hit the gas line, we got that solved pretty darn quickly, too. So all things considered, it's understandable.
That was my punishment for going on vacation. I only got the phone call to say I was gone.
Yeah, that's right. You leave for one day and this is what you come back to, right? All right. Any other comments or concerns?
Yeah, just a question. Did you find any old cars down there?
Not in that corridor, no, sir. It's been a while since we found something like that. I think last time for me was on Monizuma between Gurley and Willis. But no, no old cars this time. Just concrete of various sizes that we, trying to attribute where it may have come from was kind of hard.
Yeah, that kind of reminds me of the Park Avenue project when you had all that Prescott blue granite underneath it. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2021-181A3.
Second. Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
All right. Moving on to item 10D.
Approval of four job order contracting contracts for construction and maintenance services as follows. Number one, City Contract Number 2023-067 with Fan Contracting, Inc. Number two, City Contract Number 2023-068 with Ridge Line Builders, LLC. Number three, City Contract Number 2023-069 with Haley Construction Company. And number four, City Contract Number 2023-070 with Kenny Construction Services.
Thanks, Sarah. I want to make sure you had a mouthful at the end here. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Legler, Deputy Director, Recreation Services. So I'll kind of run through this. Basically, what the city did, or what we did as facilities, we went out for an RFQ, request for proposals, solicited that over a period of time. That's the procurement requirement. So we got 10 RFQs from different contractors, from Phoenix to local to Flagstaff companies. What a job order contract is, is it's a fixed term of maximum dollar amount or term limit, whichever occurs first. That's where we can select a contractor to do separate jobs still within their procurements. The way that the city is going to set this up is that it's set on a term limit, not an amount limit. So what that basically looks like is when we go to do remodel or we go to pave a parking lot, we can select from this list a qualified contractor that we know is licensed, approved through the bid process. They then give us the bid. If the bid falls under the $25,000 mark, then we get a purchase order, a contract, we move forward with that. If it is over that $25,000 mark, then we bring it back to present to council of here's what the project is, here's what the dollar amount is, at which time the council has the authority to approve or deny that project. This just suffices that list of qualified contractors and the bid process. Basically, this, the way we look at this, from time to time, the city requires different projects like this, from the airport to the new city hall to parks, rodeo grounds, pretty much cover the city with any of these kind of projects that we have. Comment in a nutshell, I've got some of the representatives from the companies here. I can answer any questions you might have.
Any comments or concerns? Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I was just perusing the packet here and it looks like most of the contractors are local, have been here a long time, members of the community. So I just wanted to thank you for supporting them.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Well, I know some of these smaller projects are important to be able to respond to in a prompt manner and then making sure that the contractors available from this list of approved contractors can respond. And we have confidence that they can get the project started and completed in a cost-effective manner.
Correct, yes, Mayor.
All right. Any other, any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2023-067.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
I move to approve City Contract Number 2023-068.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
I move to approve City Contract Number 2023-069.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
Move to approve City Contract Number 2023-070.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. Moving to item 10E.
Approval of items related to runway 3R21L rehabilitation project at Prescott Regional Airport as follows. Number one, City Contract Number 2023-060 with Maxwell Asphalt, Inc., for rubber removal, crack seal, seal coat, and pavement markings. And number two, approval of night work.
Good afternoon, Council. Mayor, Robin Sabata, Airport Director. So about four years ago, we reconstructed runway three right, two one left, which is a major commercial service runway. It's amazing, but we've had over 1 million operations at the airport since we did that just a little over four years ago. About 70% of them are on the main commercial service runway. And so this particular item is to do a rehabilitation project. I guess it needs it. It's had a little bit of work, you know, a little bit of use. So this is going to be a city contract with Maxwell Asphalt. They were the single bidder. I'm pleased to report that the engineer's estimate was $549,000 and this bid came in at $438,341. So I advise that you approve it quickly before they change their mind. So this will include some rubber removal from air carrier and aircraft tire buildup, some crack seals, some seal coat, and some refreshed markings. Overall, this particular work is going to be occurring sometimes during the day, but also sometimes at night. So there is a request for night work as well.
All right. Any comments or concerns? I think Maxwell is a relatively new contractor for us out at the airport. Am I correct?
Yes, they are.
Well, it's always good to see a little bit of competition and additional sources for good work. So have you had a chance to check their referrals and that?
We feel comfortable with their past performance, yes.
Very good. All right. So let's get this voted on before they raise their cost.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2023-060.
Second. Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
Mayor, I move to approve night work.
Second. Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
All right. Item 10F.
Approval of PLN 21-007, a preliminary plat of South Ranch at Deepwell Subdivision, Units 1, 2, and 3, zoning special planned communities, property owner James Deepwell Ranch's #1 LLC, location APN 102-05-036A.
George?
Mayor and Council, this is a request for final, excuse me, preliminary plat for part of Deepwell Ranch. This is South Ranch subdivision. This went to our Planning and Zoning Commission a couple of weeks ago. The recommendation I will get to in just a moment, but I'm going to give you just a very quick run-through of what's being proposed and then show you a map of that. And then the airport director has some additional slides to present to you afterwards. So this is a proposal for 359 lots on 87.3 acres. That is about a density of four units per acre, which is pretty low for some of the other subdivisions in that area. There are higher density than that. This plat in particular, sorry, let me scroll through this quick and show you what it looks like. So this is Willow Creek Road. There is a proposed extension of James Lane across the top of the project up here, and it will connect to it via an extension of Jenna Lane. So Jenna Lane goes through this subdivision plat and will eventually tie back into Willow Creek Road south of this location. The subdivision is divided into several phases, with one of the phases being on the east side of the future Jenna Lane and the remainder being on the west side. There are two access points into each portion of the subdivision, which makes for a very good fire access. Almost all of the roadways are interconnected and in conversation with the subdivider, they are working on the potential of connecting some of these cul-de-sacs on the west side together so that those become looped streets, which is even better for fire protection. So that's something they may do on their final plat. We will see that later, once this project's moved forward just a little bit. We had a recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission. I need to zoom this in way in. If I can find that. There it is. Where is it?
I think it's next to the hand.
Yeah. All right. It's just not cooperating with me. Here we go. Planning and Zoning Commission discussed this at their last meeting. They had a number of questions regarding the location, connectivity, lot arrangements, open space areas within the subdivision. And at the time, we advised them that conversations and a stipulation agreement had been worked out between the city and Ash Dorn, the developer of the project. And based upon that information, they voted six to zero in favor of the proposed preliminary plat to forward on to you for today's action. Our recommendation based on their action was to move to approve, but we do have some additional information from the airport director that you should hear first. And if you have any questions for me about the plat layout, I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to answer you either now or after Robin's presentation.
Well, George, I'll start off by criticizing these horrible maps. Page 206 is completely worthless. It doesn't have any identification of where this plat is. So even including that in the package is disturbing.
Which one is 206?
Page 207, again, no indication of where this plat occurs. If you want to look at that, you can. Then we go to the plat that you just showed, or at least it shows Willow Creek Road, but in the corner, it has this tiny, 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 how many times can I say tiny, location of where the plat exists within the vicinity of Deepwell Ranch. So that's hardly helpful. And how many times are we going to continue to see this diagonal location of Willow Creek Road that was abandoned, what, five years ago, six years ago? It doesn't exist anymore.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
So let's get some maps that actually are valuable for us to understand where these things are.
I'm not sure what you're talking about in regard to Willow Creek Road.
It was a diagonal.
It still exists as a separate parcel. That just shows the parcels.
No, but it's not used.
It's not a roadway, no. No, but it still exists.
You can drive on it.
No.
No, you can't drive on it.
It's a piece of property.
Because it's been abandoned. It doesn't, it's not an effective road anymore. So why do we put it in there?
The maps, all of our maps are based on parcel boundaries because that's how we show you where the zoning boundaries are. That is still a separate.
Do you want to look at this map, George?
It's a separate parcel that still exists.
Why don't you come up and look at it?
I have it on the screen.
Right. So where is this parcel within that orange vicinity?
It's within this area here, but there's no, that's, I'm sorry.
How about?
That's why we include the plat.
Right. Just give us some maps so we can read and understand where they are. I mean, the developers can come up with great maps, but our department can't come up with anything that even helps us understand where these things are.
Noted.
I've said this numerous times and it's about time we got this fixed. All right. Mayor Protem Ruasing.
I tend to agree with the mayor. It's been several years and I've always complained bitterly about the maps, and I'd like to direct this to Mr. Lamar, maybe make him aware of this map issue, especially I've personally spoken with community development as to how important it is to include the airport runways. This project is so proximal to the end of the runway and it's cut off. Half the runway is, airport area is cut off. You can barely tell that there is an airport in the area. And it's very important, especially this project, that the complete airport be shown legibly so that we can look at it and see how important it is that we consider the airport in our discussion. I'd like to continue on to the plat map here. If you could put that up. You said something about connecting cul-de-sacs for fire safety. Do you have, can you put this one up? It's page 208, I believe.
So this is an example of the cul-de-sacs?
But could you show the preliminary? Complete, the complete plat map, not just a small portion, the whole picture. It's the yellow one here?
It's 208.
208.
Oh, that one.
I think it's.
That's just an artist rendering. Let me zoom in on that one. I didn't have that full-sized.
Yeah, it is 208.
Yeah, that one.
Yes.
So I was just going to say that there's really not much meaningful open space here. It's just along the perimeter there, along the fence line, and I guess the medians and the roads are counted as open space. But how are you going to connect these cul-de-sacs at the end, which are supposed to be part of the open space? It looks like they, it will encroach upon the open space. Could you?
They would need to rearrange the lots near the end in order to accommodate the amount of open space and allow for that road connection. And if you look at the size of the bulb on a cul-de-sac, it's significantly wider than the street width. So by flattening it out, they can maintain the open space, but they may well lose a couple of lots as part of this process. However, from a fire safety perspective, cul-de-sacs are not good. Loop roads are good.
Exactly. Well, that brings me to my next comment. You know, we're going to have over 700 people living here, and I see that you have one main road that's 60 feet wide. It's going to be two lanes, 20 each, and then a 20-foot median in the middle. And then the other roads, which to me should be the same size at least, their major access ingress and egress, they're very narrow, 32 feet, 36 feet, and that makes no sense. I've never seen a plat like this. And I just don't think this is, with all these major changes you're talking about, rearranging the cul-de-sacs, it doesn't look like, I don't even know why we're having a conversation about it. It does not look like it's ready for prime time. There's going to be so many amendments and changes. Thank you.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. George, you mentioned that planning and zoning, and I was at the meeting when you, when you guys said this to planning and zoning, that there were stipulations that had been worked out with the developer and the city staff beforehand.
Right.
And I guess I have two questions regarding the stipulations. It might be useful to know what they are? And so I guess that's just an open-ended question. What are they? And then two, my second question, I guess, is what are the mechanisms for enforcing those stipulations and what does that look like? And I don't know, I think Joe might be able to speak to. And I don't know, I think Joe might be able to speak to the legal capacity of that a little bit, probably, as well.
It will also be discussed as part of Robin's part of the presentation.
Okay.
So we have the list of stipulations.
Okay.
Mayor Protem.
You know, public safety is our job one, and especially fire safety. And I was going to ask, how many of these homes are going to be sprinkled and how many are going to be unsprinkled? Are they all going to be sprinkled or just some of them?
I don't have an answer to that based on the concept that we're going to connect the ends of the cul-de-sacs. With the cul-de-sacs, most of those houses will not be required to have sprinklers by our fire code requirements. So I would be surprised if any other than on the very longest cul-de-sac at the south end of the property may have sprinklers.
So these, so pretty much most of these homes won't have sprinklers?
Will not have sprinklers, correct. Unless the developer builder chooses to put them in. And there has been some push in that direction by developers and builders because of long-term cost savings to insurance by having sprinklers.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. George, what are our approval responsibilities under the master plan?
For subdivision plats, the master plan left it entirely to the city's zoning code for subdivision plating processes. So if someone within a master plan area presents a subdivision plat, we treat it as if it were a subdivision plat presented anywhere else in town. Same processes, same review, most of the same criteria. There were a few modifications made by the master plan to affect some of the street layout, for instance. Street widths were modified by the master plan. So they have an allowance for narrower streets as long as the pavement meets our minimum requirement. They don't have to have some of the extended right-of-way that typical public streets have. So on a public street, typically the right-of-way is 50 feet wide, 60 feet wide, but the pavement's only 28 feet wide, sometimes 32 feet wide. Their allowance was to reduce the right-of-way, provide easements for the utilities that normally end up in our right-of-way, and narrow the right-of-way to the width of the pavement. And that's why the streets look the way they do in the plat. They're narrowed down to approximately the width of the pavement, and easements are created, PUEs, public utility easements, are created for all the utilities that we often have in a public right-of-way in areas outside the master plan.
So are there more fire accesses that I can see on here than just not picking out?
There are two on this side of the street, so two main roadways. They go in, and again, all of the loops within provide connectivity, and then two on this side of the street, same deal, looped streets within. So two accesses into this side, two accesses into this side.
So I noticed that we have the chair for the planning and zoning. Could he come up and kind of give us an idea of, I wasn't at that planning and zoning meeting, and maybe some of these other council people haven't been either, so.
I was out of town.
Could you give us a little idea of what you, what your conversations were about this plat?
A lot of the questions you had, we had too on that. In looking at the plot plan here, there's more connectivity in this one than we've seen in other plot plans in the past on that. There was questions about sprinklers on the homes and questions about the extension into the cul-de-sacs there, too. So we were on the same track with it. The commission as a whole, you know, felt the plan was good. Other questions I could answer?
Councilwoman Kent, tell me.
Yes, I had a couple of questions, actually, for George, but thank you. George, the city code, as far as fire sprinklers.
Might as well sit in the front row. We might have.
Doesn't the city code read 3,000 square feet or more is a requirement for a fire sprinkler?
For the individual size of a home.
Yeah, residential.
Right.
3,000 square feet is the cutoff right now.
I believe you're correct.
Okay. The other thing is, don't we have stipulations, specifications, I should say, from the fire department? It's very hard to see when it's not to scale for me. Are we following in those cul-de-sacs? Do we have enough turnaround for those engines to make it in there? Because what is the width of that road? It's, and is it possible to get a scale drawing given to the council when we receive these?
The subdivision plat that was attached to your packet is a scale drawing showing all of the dimensions for the lots. It also shows the road widths. And that's the larger document that split up into multiple pages that was the last attachment.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking at this, I can't even, it's so blurry, I can't even read. I see that it might say scale something, but I'm not sure. So you're saying that when this goes through planning and zoning, they have the size requirements readily available from the fire department to make sure that an engine can turn around inside those cul-de-sacs?
So all of our departments, specifically fire, public works, and building are part of reviews for plats. It's not just a review by the planning department. So the fire department has to approve it before we move it on to Planning Commission. One of the things they look at are the distances for cul-de-sacs and the turning radiuses within the bulb of the cul-de-sac. So those things are reviewed and approved before we ever even start the public review process with Planning Commission. Sorry, I keep pointing at Chairman Michaelman.
Great, yeah. Thank you. I wanted to make sure everybody realized that. Thank you.
Where are we here? Think, are you backups, Steve?
No.
All right, Mayor Protem, then.
Thank you. You know, in reality, multiple engines go to a fire, not just one engine. And looking at these little spaghetti-thin roads, I mean, how wide is this, these little residential streets?
The internal roadways are 32 feet of pavement.
But to try.
They're standard city-size width on the pavement.
To try to get a couple of engines back in there with those little nodules at the end, trying to get them in and out and people evacuated. I mean, I'd like to see a better plat than this, showing those, how they plan on joining up those cul-de-sacs and connecting them and making them more into loops and have better egress and, egress and ingress. My next question is on, I call this the corn cob picture. There's little teeny red lines, kind of sporadic, random little red lines. They're supposed to be sidewalks. Is that, according to the legend down there, it says sidewalks are where those little red lines are just, I've never seen anything where they're not connected to anything, just little dibs and dabs of sidewalks. I mean, you know, you're talking about a, this is supposed to be a premier community, and you have these narrow streets, no sidewalks, or just sporadic sidewalks that start in the middle of nowhere and end in the middle of nowhere. I mean, I just, I just can't explain this. I've never seen anything like this.
Understood.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my question probably is a segue into Robin's presentation. I guess my question is, you know, I received an email from Commissioner Gambogi regarding what he's understanding of the impact from the splay and what was presented at that meeting for planning and zoning, what the impact of the splay was for this subdivision. And I guess my impression from the email that I received and the conversation that I had with the city manager this morning is that that has changed from the Planning and Zoning Commission, or there's a distinction that's worth bringing up. And again, George, I'm happy to have Robin talk about this, too.
Yeah, I think what you'll see in Robin's presentation is a better-defined picture of the splay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would love to see that.
Councilwoman Shishka, I guess you are backup, huh?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. George, what is the width of a standard street in Prescott?
Per current requirements, it's either going to be 28 feet without curbs and gutters or 32 with curb and gutter.
So these are standard streets.
The pavement width is in our requirements.
They're not, you know, they're planned so that multiple fire vehicles can go through them and not hit each other and things like that.
The fire department is a reviewer of the plat and has to approve it along with any of the other departments who are reviewers before we move it forward.
And I'm assuming that those reviews have gone through and they approved?
We moved it forward to the Planning Commission, and that doesn't happen unless they've reviewed it.
Okay. Thank you.
I noticed in the section on the end of the background and the starting of the Planning Commission action, it does say the subdivision is in proximity to the airport and is subject to a number of additional requirements for review by city staff and the FAA. The city may impose additional requirements affecting structure heights and tree species choices for landscaping, considering maximum mature growth heights at the time of building permit review. So even though the preliminary plat could be reviewed, they still have to meet these additional expectations before building permits would be issued.
Correct. That's very similar to having to meet building code requirements. It's not a condition of approval of the plat because it's an automatic requirement later to comply with those code requirements.
And it also says the city, the approximate development stages was noted by planning staff, and after discussions, the commission voted six, six zero in favor of the proposed preliminary plat and the stipulation agreement to comply with FAA requirements at the appropriate development stages. So there will be a series of reviews as the construction grading permit is applied, and then as these phases of construction occur, then they'll be reviewing to make sure that they meet the FAA requirements on height. I know there's concerns about construction cranes being lowered when they should be lowered. And from my understanding, we've had other construction cranes out there, whether it's some of the concrete pouring that happens. And the contractors are not paying attention to the takeoff timing. And I think there's been quite a number of occurrences where they just ignored it. So I think it's much more important this time that we get this right and make sure that those contractors know when those cranes have to be lowered and that we monitor them.
So one of the, one of the advantages we have with this subdivision that's a little different than most is that the eventual builder of the homes is the subdivider. Ash Dorn not only subdivides, but they build the homes in the subdivision. So there should be far more control over the contractors and the requirements of the subdivision plat in this case than we sometimes see in other subdivisions where a multitude of independent builders build homes.
Well, I hope we can move from should to will. Mayor Protem, are you up again?
Yes, thank you. George, I have a question about the zoning. It's L-U-G-V. If they wanted to amend this plat and put in multifamily apartments, can they do that?
They would have to come back through this process, but yes. Just like you could do the same thing elsewhere, if the zoning allows you to have a different type of use, you can modify your subdivision plat, come back through the Planning Commission and council to amend it. So it would take an action by council to let them change it.
Even, even though it's in the close proximity to the airport and might be in an impact zone, they can still do that, and we have no say?
That would be an evaluation we would have to do if they come to us and say that. So we haven't evaluated whether this property is appropriate for multifamily because they haven't proposed multifamily. So we've reviewed their master plan based on what they're proposing to do now. And if they come back and ask for anything differently, that process starts all over with a review of the master plan and a review of the subdivision plat through the processes that this has taken so far. So no, they can't just do it willy-nilly. Not often a planner gets to say willy-nilly. They can't just do it willy-nilly. They have to full, they have the full process of a rezoning or a replat in order to make that modification.
But if we wanted to say no, can we say no to protect the airport?
You have to have particular reasons based on the design of the project to say no, but I can't, I can't tell you without having a project before you whether or not there's something that would trigger a no. But certainly that's something that gets evaluated, both by staff and by the Planning Commission and you.
But an AVO district might help us out. That's another thing that concerns me is, this is proceeding, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. The tail's wagging the dog here, bringing this to us now while we're in the midst of trying to adopt an AVO district to prevent encroachment, to protect the airport. And by protecting the airport, we're protecting the public, because public safety, health, welfare, and safety of the community is this body's main job. It's not the developer's job. Their job is to make as much money as quickly as they can. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Kent, tell me.
Yes, hi, George. A couple of, just questions. I did understand we've had a lot of situations out there with other builders that have had problems with the height of their, the booms, the concrete pumping.
Right.
Why isn't the city going out there and issuing stop work? Because I know, again, 40 years in the business, if you're issued a stop work, that's exactly what it means, you stop work. And there's a cost involved in that. I guarantee you, you do that a couple of times and they will listen. Why aren't we doing that?
If our building department is made aware of them violating codes, they will do that.
Do we have inspectors that go out and check these things out?
They do, but as you know from your background in construction, we aren't there necessarily when they're pouring concrete. We have to inspect before they pour it. So very often, our inspector's already gone on to the next inspection before the concrete trucks arrive.
Well, so is there just, is there any vessel for accountability for this? I mean, if they get, I mean, this is such a serious issue. If you have one airplane trying to take off, just think about the potential of that, and you've got a concrete boom there pumping, which is not something you can back up very easily. That has to go forward. Do we delay the airplane for a couple of hours until they move out of there? I mean, there's got to be a financial consequence, it seems like, if this happens. And it's got to come down, you know, hot and heavy immediately because of what could potentially happen. I mean, how do we get them to take this seriously if we've had 30, 40 violations already?
We need to figure out a process, then, to go and look at these sites in between our normal inspections. And that means using personnel who are tasked with inspections on sites to do more inspections. So we may be looking at additional inspectors in order to be able to do that. If we get complaints, if we, if we know of something, if an aircraft operator calls the tower and says, hey, I had to divert because someone's got a boom up, then that information needs to come to the building department. And our reaction time is very fast. We have inspectors in the field nearly all day who can be rerouted to a location if we know there's a problem. But if we don't have the complaint routed to us, then it's going to be a haphazard discovery when our inspectors are going from job over here to job over here to do inspections.
But could I, could I suggest, you remember a few years ago, you've been around long enough to know when, all of a sudden, it became a requirement for an epoxy inspection? If you're going to put some rebar into a stem or make a connection, you had to have an inspector onsite to physically watch you shoot the epoxy into the drillable hole to make sure it was done as per the engineering. Could we attach a, some kind of a certification form or something that they would have to fill out at the city, call for an inspection? In this case, it would be calling for an inspection of the boom height, and they don't get to go forward until they, we sign off on that. Because, again, because of the danger, there, there are short pours, but when you have a pour of the size of some of these, it's got to be done, you know, in order, obviously, with, you know, with the stem pour, which could probably be a short pour and would not require a boom. But when you have a slab of some of these sizes, you've got to have a boom. But I, we've got to have a mechanism to be able to make sure that these people comply. And let me tell you another thing, as you know how the process works in the construction, the company owner will know all this, but does this get passed down to the actual operator? And that is a problem in the construction industry, the disconnect between the people that know what they should be doing, i.e. the general contractors, down to all of the subcontractors. And there's another problem, you know, in timing. They say they're going to be there at seven in the morning, they don't show up at nine because they didn't get their batch in time. There's a lot of variables in there, but because this is such an important issue, could I suggest that we adopt some rules in the development department concerning this? I suggest that we adopt some rules in the Development Department concerning this, where they have to call ahead and say, the boom is going to be onsite between 7:00 and 8:00, hypothetically, and we need to have an inspector here to sign off on it? Now, I know you're short probably with inspectors, but those booms are subcontracted, and we only have a few in town that can do it. So it's not like we can get, you know, this can get out of control, because it can't. There's only a few of them. And you have to call ahead, make a reservation, and these people show up to these sites. I don't think Ash Dorn owns a boom, a pumper. I'm pretty sure they don't. And I think there's only two or three in town. So we could be able to control this if we made the effort to do it. It would just call for some changes in the Development Department and the requirements for the permitting process. I did have another thing. I own some properties, and I have a property in a community like this, and I've got to tell you, and there actually is some case law down in Phoenix with this, there is no overflow parking in here at all. Did anybody do a parking analysis of this in Planning and Zoning or anywhere? Because let me tell you what happens in the human world today. Our garages are our dumping points. Everybody has their garages full of stuff from Amazon or whatever. The cars end up out. I live in a, I have a property in an HOA that has no parking at night in the CCNRs, so if you are, you're sighted if you park out on the street. Where are they going to go? There's absolutely no overflow. So if their garage is full, if they even have a garage, I don't see a garage noted on this. Okay, they do? Two car or one and a half?
I believe they're twos.
Two car? So is there?
So for single-family homes, single-family development for parking, we have an onsite requirement for two parking spaces for a single-family home behind the front building setback. That's normally in the garage. And then we have a requirement for a minimum of 20 feet of driveway space between the garage door and the edge of the street or the edge of the sidewalk in order to provide for two additional cars. So we're providing by our own zoning code and everywhere, not just here, for potentially four cars per individual, single-family house. In most single-family subdivisions, we don't require and don't see group parking or off-street parking in some parking lot manner. Those are more often in multifamily developments. We see that a lot because the overflow parking situation is different. We park apartments by the number of bedrooms, and then they're required to have an extra guest space as part of their calculation. So in those cases, you'll see separated parking spaces, but for single-family subdivisions, it's extremely rare.
Yeah, because if you look at this drawing right here, there is nowhere on any one of those houses that I see a driveway at all. And that could be misleading to a lot of people looking at this.
But none of the houses are shown. It's only a subdivision plat at this stage. We don't show the buildings.
You wouldn't have the apron denoted on there?
Not at this stage, no. They have a requirement to meet those, so when they submit building plans, we review to make sure they meet all of those requirements as part of the building permit review. And again, for most of our building permits, even for single-family homes, nearly every single department is a reviewer as part of the process. The fire department, the Planning Division looks for parking and setbacks. Everyone looks at those.
So you're saying there is no requirement for overflow parking at all in any of these pads?
In single-family subdivisions, we do not.
Okay, that's a mistake. I can tell you firsthand. And you can look anywhere in any municipality, this kind of density is a parking nightmare. We have people parking out on Main Thoroughfares just if they have kids, for example, and all of a sudden they turn 16. Where do you put that third car, fourth car, or fifth car? So that needs to be looked at. It's creating a problem in other municipalities. But anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to.
Councilman Shishka is next up, but apparently not.
I'd just like to make a comment. I think prevention's the best medicine, and rather than waiting for a pilot to be in the air and noticing he's dodging a boom, a concrete boom, I would like to suggest that part of this plat approval contains stipulation that there's an agreement between the airport and Ash Dorn in writing as to who's going to do what when a construction boom is out there, so that the pilots can be briefed and say, okay, today between 9:00 and 10:00, they're going to be using a boom, and they can brief the pilots ahead of time so that they can avoid and be aware of that obstruction. And I don't think that's, and if they don't follow the agreement, then they get fined for, like Connie said, a stop work order. Because we need to have some teeth here and get coordinated, because they're going to be building, you know, what, 300 and almost 60 homes, pouring concrete and using cranes to set roof trusses, and we just need to be aware and be coordinated better and have an agreement so that everyone knows what the expectations are. Thank you.
Councilman Shishka. You missed your spot, so we'll bring it back in.
Thank you very much. George, could this all be dealt with as the process goes forward?
All is a pretty big word. Considering some of the concerns that I've heard here, some of them certainly are building permit-level concerns. Setbacks, parking spaces that Councilwoman Cantalmy brought up, those are things that we look at individually with each house as it comes through the permitting process. Agreements in advance about calling inspections and how we handle them, that's obviously something that Community Development's going to have to figure out. We don't have inspection staff to park someone out there for an hour waiting on concrete to show up. That may mean an increase in inspection staff in order to handle something like that. But an agreement in advance, that's something that could perhaps, maybe, should happen before a final plat's approved. And there's certainly time from preliminary plat to final to negotiate additional changes or to reach an agreement that's potentially binding, and I would defer to legal about what kind of an agreement that could be.
And I just would say quickly, we did mention that there was kind of a stipulated agreement before we got to this point, and part of that was an agreement that there'd be a process memorandum before a grading permit was issued as it related to that work, and then another process memorandum before any building permit was issued, which dealt with these issues of temporary obstructions, cranes, and so forth. So, and they're here, and we can ask the developer or their representative if they would agree to that, but they have already agreed to that, and that was part of what got us to this point. So in terms of then the enforcement, that is a question for the Development Department to decide, or the Department to decide how they can enforce it, whether they need additional inspectors or so, what it may require.
Okay, Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, on that line of thinking about that, what you just said, one of the things that I recall that came up at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting when this preliminary plat got approved through there was, I think it was Commissioner Riley talked about this idea of the navigation easement not being sufficient merely at the disclosure level of the purchase of the home. And he was suggesting that, if I understood what he was saying correctly, and I talked to him afterwards, and I think I do have an understanding of what he was saying, which is that point of purchase is a significant place to put this at. And is that a stipulation that we've explored with the developer, or is that a stipulation that's worth considering, exploring? I mean, from where I sit, I think it is, because I think one of the things that I hear in context of the AVO is that, well, people know that they live near an airport. Well, I've bought three different pieces of property, and one of them surely is near an airport. The other one, I don't know, might be, but, you know, if it's in that disclosure packet, that's not adequate disclosure, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I think that is something we've explored a little bit. The first requirement that we had spoken about was.
Should we talk about what we've already negotiated, just so they know what they are at this point? I think there'd be some value to that.
I'm not sure if we have that in the airport slideshow.
Sorry, Robyn Sabat, Airport Director. The actual attachment that was in the Planning and Zoning meeting, I do not have. I have a slide that shows the remaining concerns that were not addressed in that particular document.
So we could bring those forward and to discuss whether or not those are the stipulations we're going to live by, correct?
We can. And I think that, I guess to answer the question in brief, it is something that we have discussed.
Yes.
We've requested that before permits are issued. We see that disclosure notice, and so we know that it's going out at the time of purchase agreement rather than the time of closing.
And so is that something, I mean, I guess here's my concern, and I think when I talked to you yesterday about this, Joe, this is something that occurs to me. And this might not be applicable in this specific situation of this preliminary plat, but I guess going forward, it would be nice to see some capacity. Yeah, we could hold up a grading permit for this development and say, hey, you've got them, we want to see what your evidence that you're doing, this airport disclosure at point of purchase. That's fine and good, but 10 years down the road, when that initial purchaser goes to sell that house, what capacity do we have to ensure that there is also another disclosure that happens at point of purchase? And we may not have the capacity to enforce that.
It's much more difficult on a second sale.
Yeah.
It is, but, and it's kind of a different topic, but it is something that's being contemplated in the AVO. For those, when we're talking about those disclosures now, it is with the developer and the home builder. The second, third, fourth sellers of the home, that would be something that the AVO can consider and require those fair notice disclosures in the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Well, to me, it looks like we're trying to put a square peg in a round hole. By proceeding with this plat now, we're going to have another 720 people who are not going to be properly notified as to airport overflight noise, and we're going to have another 720 people complaining bitterly about how they weren't properly notified. And that's why we need to make sure that this plat is not exempt from our AVO district if it's passed. I would prefer that we work on the AVO district and get that passed so that this is under that AVO district umbrella, because we don't need another, just keep compounding the pattern of having people not being properly notified. And if they're in the AVO district, they will be properly notified numerous times.
Councilman Shishka. Thanks, Mayor. This is for the Airport Director, Robyn.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for coming in. Were you in on these negotiations?
I was in on the discussions. I gave recommendations as to what the airport needed to see.
Okay.
The document came back substantially changed. I was on a cruise ship during this actual meeting, and it does appear that perhaps there were some confusions in the meeting, so I did bring some additional information that maybe will address some of those misunderstandings in the meeting, so if you would like me to.
So before we go off the rails, probably it would be good to hear from you.
Would you like to?
Please proceed.
Yes.
Okay. If I could, there we go. So like you had some difficulty looking at the maps provided, so I had to put them in context with the information we have. This is a very complicated part of the airport. This is the commercial service runway coming down into this area. These are impact zones that are identified. This is Zone 1, which is a high risk of aircraft impact or crash. This is Zone 2, which is also a significant risk area, even down into this area, which is Zone 4 for the general aviation runway. This is considered a moderate risk. And then in terms of a crash, the rest of this project, which is actually this area right here, is considered a lower impact area. So there are some concerns that we did have with regard to impact zones. I also show on this diagram the airline splay. This is the outer area of the airplane splay, the airline splay right here. And then this is the center surface. So the outer surface is from here to here, and the center surface is the area between the two yellow lines. And it extends all of them.
Is that the general aviation, commercial aviation, or all of them?
This is the commercial service runway, and this is the splay for the airline that comes off the commercial service runway. The impact zone that is shown here is the skirt or Zone 3 of the commercial service runway, and running underneath it is Zone 4 of the general aviation runway. That's what you see here. So these are different risk levels based on, you know, historic crash data from the National Transportation Safety Board. So this is the project right here, and now you can see that it does actually transcend a bit into the main center area of the splay, and it's also in the outer surface of the splay in this area. So there are some concerns. In addition, aside from impact Zone 4 here, there is also some of this project that is in this area here and was discussed in conversations with Ash Dorn. And I do want to point out that they were very friendly, and I really appreciated the work that we did start to work on there, but we do have some concerns that remain, and I wanted to bring those to your attention. And I can go back to this slide in a minute, but I just wanted to give you an idea. This does not show all the approach and departure surfaces associated with an instrument runway. There are numerous other layers over the top of this that do come into play, but I wanted to kind of clean it up and show you just the airline splay and the impact zone in this particular diagram.
Robyn, I'm sorry to stop you here for a second, but maybe you'll answer this. So if that's the case, feel free to say you're going to answer this. But are you going to expand beyond the language of concerns? When you say you have concerns, I'd like to know more about what those concerns are.
She's going to go into them.
Okay.
Yes. So aside from the general understanding of the meeting that we did have, there was a response back from the attorney that was a different version than I had submitted. So I was not able to address that before I left on my vacation, and this was in front of Planning and Zoning while I was on vacation. Sorry about that. I wanted to crawl in from the cruise ship, I really did. I did send in a statement, but unfortunately, my statement was not read at the Planning and Zoning meeting, so I'm going to go ahead and just overview some of the items. In this Ash Dorn project, we have some concerns. There is FAA Part 77, that's Federal Aviation Regulation Part 77, obstruction analysis airspace cases. We are awaiting, they are awaiting, the FAA response on permanent obstructions. We're hopefully going to get those in the next 30 to 60 days. What has not yet been submitted to the FAA, and it is a concern for us, are temporary obstructions. So temporary obstructions can have a different treatment when you go through the FAA process. You try to work around things like this. The cranes, on typical, on average, during the Saddlewood and Westwood projects have been typically 90 to 110 feet tall. One of the things that really concerns us, there's a trust issue here, is that we've had a lot of past problems with Dorn. In fact, since January of this year, there have been 49 instances in which Ash Dorn did not properly report a crane that was erected. It was observed either by airport staff or by the air traffic control tower or by a pilot, and they did not actually properly report a single crane in the past year. The last time they properly recorded a crane was in 2021. When we did meet with them two weeks ago, we told them about these problems, and there have been three additional instances that have occurred where the crane has been erected without prior notification since our meeting. So we remain really concerned because the 49 instances happened in the visual areas of the airport, which are up here in the Saddlewood and Westwood area, but now we're getting into these instrument areas and this airline splay, and the impacts could be significant. Aside from the fact that it's possible that the FAA, in their response to the temporary obstruction crane application, could indeed say that it may have a significant impact on the approaches and the departure surfaces for instrument landing. So I do want to make a point that this is basically my list of concerns and conditions. However, I do want to note that should there be an adverse FAA finding affecting safety or normal aircraft operation as we move forward on this project, we do reserve the right to object to any proposed structures, temporary or permanent, based on those analyses and findings. So basically, if this project's going to go on for a year, for example, and they want to put up cranes, and generally, it's like one crane per house, you know, you put in the trusses, and you come back and maybe do HVAC later, the idea is those cranes are going to go up a lot. And I'm really concerned about the temporary obstruction doing, basically breaking our approaches, and we may not be able to continue to use some of those instrument approaches if these temporary obstructions are up for months at a time. That could mean pilot safety, and it's a concern. So we really need to see them not just do the permanent obstruction evaluation that's going through right now. They need to get going on the temporary obstruction evaluations so we can see whether or not there is going to be a problem with our approaches that will be prevented from use over six months to a year's time while they're doing their construction. I need to tell you that even as the Airport Director, I cannot approve an FAA adverse finding that they want to suggest that's going to render our approaches and departures for instrument condition usable. I can tell you there will be huge backlash from the aviation community if they find out that these approaches. That's not to say that they may not be able to counterpropose another construction method where the cranes wouldn't have to go up. Or Joe and I, Joe, if I may say, that you and I even discussed maybe a window that they could operate that would be a reliable window. But these things really need to be worked out. I'm very, very concerned about those. Another item that was discussed was the Deepwell Ranch had a required disclosure for development. That disclosure was never put into the CCNRs, which was contrary to the Deepwell Ranch master plan. Our understanding is that it was actually revised on August of 2022. However, they did omit mentioning something that was required in the original disclosure, and that was the average daily aircraft operational counts. That is approximately 882 aircraft a day that could potentially overfly this community. And so as a result, I think it's real important that people need to understand that count, and that was omitted from the documents. So we really need to see that moving along. Under the impact zones, we're concerned that there's a risk issue, and there are open space guarantees. We did discuss open space with them, and we actually said, okay, if you're going to build in Zone 4, then what about a commensurate space in the splay area? So there was kind of a discussion, I don't want to call it a swap, but there was an understanding that in allowing these homes in a risk zone, that's a moderate risk zone, it freed up these areas out here in the splay to be free of obstructions above 10 feet. And so we just need to know how to memorialize that, because there currently, there isn't some document that will persist beyond me or something right now that says that those really would be preserved without having them put a tree in there that might affect the splay. And this is a real sensitive area. You can see this coloring right here. In this area, it says anything over 10 feet, basically, is a problem in the airline splay and would prevent the carrier from being able to operate normally without making adjustments onboard the aircraft. There's also a concern that there's just a row of homes here that have been cleared, the homes themselves. But if you try to put up a crane in these areas, it's, you're going to stop operations for the carrier. And so that's a concern, this little area right here. So we just have to have this clearly memorialized. And we discussed the concept of that, but we need to see the language, because what I put in came back in a different, slightly different form. And as a result, I'm just concerned we don't have that memorialized yet. And it's really important that we do that, so that this trust factor that we had from these 49 instances of non-reporting, we can kind of maybe get past that. That would be great. Finally, under the airline one-engine OEI splay, we did agree that in the center splay area, which is the center surface here, nothing above 10 feet, the outer splay, nothing above 40 feet. Now, there are some opportunities to go above that, but we'd be on a case-by-case basis, and we want to work with them on that. But again, we need to, you know, iron out how we're going to proceed. And then frankly, thank you very much, Council, for your observation that we need an enforcement mechanism. If we stop carrier operations, that's rough. If we put an approach procedure needed for instrument approach out of service, that's really tough on our community. It's a safety issue. So this enforcement mechanism is important. And then also, we need to address the CCNRs or plat protections for the future objects so that if, for whatever reason, trees are planted in here beyond, when we're around and people do it, we need to be able to have that taken down and not have a big misunderstanding about it, or argument of, it's got to come down. These areas, while great for us not having to acquire them, we are very concerned that they need to be fully protected. And something that is perpetual protection, not just a letter between, say, an attorney and attorney, but something on the plat map, something that's enforceable with some type of enforcement mechanism, especially if the neighborhoods take these over and decide to turn them into a two-story backstop with a baseball field, or something that they think is fine. I know that there's a process for going through that with community development. However, if I'm not around anymore and I don't point out, hey, by the way, this is the splay, we need to have something that clearly tells future generations, this was protected for a reason. So those would be kind of the conditions with the additional caveat that should the FAA find an adverse finding that will affect future aircraft, that we will reserve the right to protest against it, even to the extent of not approving whatever is being proposed for that particular part of the project that may jeopardize operations at the airport. So I did want to point out that this is not something new. The width of that splay right there, there's the outer and the inner, has actually been shown on maps and diagrams since the middle of the summer. This splay width has been known. Exactly where the center area it was, was just recently confirmed by the airspace expert, but that was shared with both Ash Dorn and also with Aspire that's down here. I did overlay, just kind of so you had an idea, this is the same splay. You can see, it's roughly the same width. It did go over a row of homes at the end down here, did involve them. But we did clear those homes. Those would be fine down there in that area, as long as the obstructions associated wouldn't become an issue, those temporary obstructions. So ultimately, just so you understand that center area, the center surface is the aerodata SkyWest boundary. That's this area here in red. That's a vertical component in here that shows above current terrain, how tall something can be. And you can see, when it gets up here into this real red area, it means that an object cannot be over 10 feet, or an object cannot be above ground level. So this is important to note. There's some areas, serious areas in here and in this area here, where you couldn't put anything at all. And so we have to be mindful of that. Now, what we also have is an outer surface. This is the all-airline, all-vendor boundary. We've heard in the past, some people have said, well, we're doing this just for one airline. I want to point out, all-airline, all-vendor means just that. This is a vertical component based on FAR Part, that's Federal Aviation Regulation Part 25, 121, 135, Part 91, Subpart K. And essentially, this is used by many other airports, including San Francisco, DFW, San Jose, Miami, Fort Lauderdale. This is the way you protect the splay. So this doesn't just protect it for one carrier, this splay protects it for our future and future carriers. And actually, what's interesting, you can see down here that the information for this splay was actually obtained from Boeing-Jepson, Aircraft Performance Group, Automated Systems, NAV, Airbus, American Envoy, Delta, and United Airlines, all contributed to the creation of our splay, because there are actually multiple splays associated with Prescott Regional Airport, and this is all encompassed in this protective surface. So with that having been said.
Mayor Broten.
Thank you, Robin. It's too bad you weren't at the planning and zoning meeting. You were on vacation. And because I have a feeling that planning and zoning might not have voted the way they did. But that being said, I am not comfortable with voting on this today, because I feel if we move it forward, we lose our leverage with the builder. I would like to propose that we send this back to planning and zoning, and to legal, and all the different departments, because it sounds like there's, we need to start getting things in writing for once. I, for one, have had the unhappy experience of hearing verbal promises that never come to fruition because they were never in writing. And I think we need to have some agreements. And if we pass this thing and keep moving it forward, I think we do lose our leverage and our ability to negotiate with the builder and to come to a happy situation that'll benefit everybody.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Yes, I had a couple of questions, but I wanted to kind of back up a little bit, and let's talk about those cranes and the booms. Given the fact that the airport, according to your second area, has approximately 882 operations a day, is there even a span of time that they could, you know, like a two-hour window, maybe if we stipulated that you can only pour concrete or set trusses for two hours during this time? Is that even possible in an airport like ours that's so busy?
And I think what's important is, what we need to find out is how high the temporary obstructions are that would affect the approaches. Because my concern over monsoon season would be, even if you pick a two-hour slot, if the pilot needs to be able to, you know, use the approaches to be able to land safely, we have to be able to stop the crane from operating or the boom from operating. And once we get that second bullet point kind of squared away on the temporary obstructions so that we know if it's going to break our approaches or not, then that's what I'm concerned about. And if so, I don't want to be about those approaches for a considerable amount of time. So we have to sort of work out what we can do, particularly during weather, high-weather conditions.
So the answer is pretty much no. There is no span of time that we would not have an airplane that could potentially need to have that, those instruments in working order. I mean, it's too risky.
It depends on how many different approaches it affects. It's possible it may affect one approach and not another. With this information, we'll be able to tell. I mean, I'm open to working with them. I mean, I'm not trying to give you guys a hard time. What we need to do is just protect the safety of the flying public. So we need to know whether or not the, so we have actually volunteered up, Joe, you reached out to them, I believe, we have volunteered up our airspace expert to work closely with them and see if we can work through this process hand in hand so that we can submit all of the potential obstructions, get back all of the information on any adverse impact it might have on our approaches and our instruments. And then with that, I think we'll be able to say, okay, if it only affects this approach, then this user usually uses it, and maybe we could do this two-hour window, because they don't do that during the time of day. So, but if it's all of our approaches that could potentially be affected, this could be serious.
Could you, is there any possibility of backing up to the map that you, with the red, yeah, that one? In the, in the two areas that we were talking about that are encroaching into the splay there, and you've got them kind of in a mustard color.
This one?
Yeah, that one and the other one behind it.
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any talk with the developer or the builder about maybe leaving those open? I know it's, there's a value, and I'm new, okay?
And actually, we did work, we did work hand in hand with them on that, and we did say that, yes, this is Zone 4. And honestly, because it's moderate risk for crash, we're not thrilled about it. But by the same token, this is also Zone 4. So basically, they had the possibility of using that for homes, and we would have, it would have been right in our splay. So this was part of the cooperative discussions that we had. They're just not been adequately memorialized at this point.
I think it would be good for me to make a point. I didn't participate in the negotiations, but I think both parties left the negotiation feeling as if they had reached a reasonable compromise. What happened after that is the applicant submitted a revised letter that didn't look a heck of a lot like the letter you thought it was going to look like. So for Council, you need to understand that when we took this off of impasse and brought this to you, we were under the impression that we were really close and it made sense. What's happened is the Airport Director has found that there are several instances where what she said at the meeting didn't make it to the next step. Is that, am I right about that?
Yeah. And then we still didn't work out the crane issue, because three more times after we met.
There's still a crane.
There's still a crane poking up at 110 feet with no notification. So we have to, we're just concerned that what was supposed to be built on trust needs to have more than just trust. It's, it's.
Well, I think I still have the floor here for one more second. Would it be too much to ask that we, since we are the voting body, get a list of those conditions? I would like to see those conditions.
I think that makes total sense.
Yeah. Before we vote on something, I don't want to hold them up, but I also, I don't want you to spend money moving forward, because I know how expensive this proposition is, without everybody being fully vested in this decision. Because if you move next, that the next step is a very expensive step for you, I know as a builder. And it would be nice to be able to have these conditions laid out and the agreements signed off on so that we're all clear on that. Because there are some, there are some, definitely some concerns with some of those parcels there. If I was a homeowner, I would definitely not want to live in that row right there. So I think we need to have a little more information before we move forward, too. And I think we can do this quickly. Maybe I'm fooling myself, but I believe we can. So that's just how I feel about that.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I would tend to agree with the point that Councilwoman Cantelme just made. I would, I would, I frankly think that conditions on a preliminary plat like this should have been memorialized in the preliminary plat. I don't know whether they were. That seems, to me, it seems obvious, but I, maybe I'm missing something. The other thing I would say, I think, you know, I don't, I don't know if sending this back to planning and zoning is appropriate. My guess is, I don't know, that that seems like an undue burden to me personally. But what I will say is that there's been a lot of suggestion recently that the city has acted in bad faith as they've proceeded through the AVO. To me, 49 instances in the last however much time, what, a year? And then three more instances after you were notified of that? That seems like the very definition of bad faith to me. And it's a little bit frustrating, because I want to work to make this work, but when you're not doing the very least that you can, it kind of feels like you just don't really care. And that's disappointing. And I don't know. I can't, I can't support this where it stands today.
You know, another mechanism, if you don't have the enforcement staffing, is to ratchet up the penalty for non-compliance. If you want to put teeth in something, make it cost something. And I think you have complete discretion to do that.
And I think that's a potential solution, rather than going out and hiring another boom operator inspector to be on site 24/7 while this happens. I mean, it's my, it's pretty clear to me that the builder doesn't have control over the actual operator of these cranes and booms. And the consequences of having them in place when we're having takeoffs, especially with commercial carriers, is very significant. Not even to consider the potential for a possible impact with a general aviation plane or a new student pilot. These things have to be specifically agreed to and be able to be monitored. And if we can't have somebody out there every, every day monitoring, then we should be able to have some escalating fines when we find that we've got a boom or a crane operating when it's not approved to do so. And quite frankly, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission and the commissioners there might have made a different decision if they had some of this information brought to their attention before they brought it forward with approval. And I guess I'd have to ask Don Michaelman whether you would be willing to review this again before it's brought back for a vote to the Council.
I don't think there'd be any problem for this to go back to P&amp;Z for review, especially with information that, unfortunately at the time, wasn't available.
Well, I just would, would like to know from you whether there's sufficient information now that you've heard tonight to be able to justify a second look.
What I would suggest is, I can't speak for my other commissioners.
Right.
I would like to have them have the opportunity to say what they would like to have to.
Right. Well, it seems to me like this is, we're not prepared to really make a vote and a decision on this preliminary plat with these, with these serious unresolved concerns. So I guess we would entertain a motion?
Before we entertain a motion, I'd like to ask one question, and I'd like to respectfully ask if we are bringing the AVO district vote to Council sometime in the near future? Do we have a timeframe yet?
Yes. Do you guys want to articulate the timeframe? Or do you want me to articulate the time?
Kirby Snideman, Airport Director, or, excuse me, Community Development Director.
Oh, my.
You've been promoted.
No. Freudian slip there.
It's going to, this Thursday, the Planning Commission is going to hear. And they have the choice to make a decision and send a recommendation along to the Council or to deliberate on it further. So I can't tell you exactly when it's going to come to Council. Potentially, it could come at the late October meeting.
The next meeting?
Potentially. But it could also, if the Planning Commission wants to spend more time on it.
It could be as late as November.
Yes.
Which is reasonable, because as Mr. Michaelman and I talked today, they really have a lot to get their arms around. And if they need more than one meeting to get their arms around it, I think we need to be patient with that.
Thank you.
Well, I think considering the AVO deliberations and some of the unresolved and serious issues involved in this preliminary plat, we should recommend that we postpone a vote on this and send it back to Planning and Zoning for their review at an appropriate time. I doubt if it's going to be this week, probably be next month. And I hate to delay Ash Dorn's plans, but I think you've heard tonight that there are a lot of serious concerns that need to be resolved before we can approve a preliminary plat and then start the grading and building process going forward.
Mayor, before you take a motion, I do have a comment card.
Okay.
Ashley Marsh.
need to be resolved before we can approve a preliminary plat and then start the grading and, and building process going forward.
Mayor, before you take a motion, I do have a comment card.
Okay.
Ashley Marsh.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Members of council, Ashley Marsh, Gammage and Burnham, 40 North Central, for your record. I am attorney working with the applicant, Ash Dorn, who's also the property owner, and we respect and appreciate all your feedback this evening. But I did want to make just a record and address this body. One, thank you for your thoughtful comments. But two, just to put our application into context as well, this is a pre-plat. This is an application subject to entitlements, subject to zoning, subject to a master plan, and it is administrative review. And that pre-plats are judged against those already entitled rights and whether we conform to those or not. And it is an administrative function of this body to look at those zoning, which we've met, look at those, excuse me, land rights, which we've met, looked at those master plan, which we've met, and to make a determination based on those current entitlements, whether this pre-plat meets those boxes or doesn't. It is not a determination, respectfully, of whether it is subject to future entitlements, which a recommendation has not come forth from the Plank, Planning Commission at this juncture. So what we're seeking is a pre-plat review to say, does our proposal meet what we're entitled to do based upon the approved zoning and master plans? Not something yet to come with some modification, but what we're looking at here today and if we have those criteria met or not met. We do come with staff support based on looking at those criteria. We did meet with the airport director for over two hours and with the city attorney to come into some type of consensus of what a construction plan might look like moving forward, because we have heard those concerns. And what we try to do is tie those to the appropriate mechanisms and the appropriate timing for construction. We've talked about grading permits, when those can be issued, creating a mechanism to inform the airport so that, that makes sense. We've talked about building permits, make sure that those cranes are up. But what we really appreciate is review of the pre-plat, because none of this can happen without a pre-plat approval. So here today, again, we're looking at our line work. We're looking at the roads, right? Does that conform with city code? Yes. Does fire approve? Yes. Are there connection points? Yes. Are there things that we can do to ensure that the building is done right? Yes, let's tie that to a building permit. Is there things that we can assure to make sure that notification's done at grading? Yes, let's tie that to a grading permit. So that work that we've done is in advance, or excuse me, is, is dated after a pre-plat process. After this, we still need to come to you for a final plat approval. So those things like cul-de-sac connection, can we condition that, you know, that the cul-de-sac condition is shown on a final plat? Yes. And that we're conformance with that final plat? Yes. Things like our open space tract, where we've worked with the airport to show, okay, we understand there's some concern about some overlap in the OEI splay. We have it tracked here that will be homeowner, excuse me, HOA owned and maintained on our pre-plat so that when we go to final plat, there are some boxes that can be checked, because that's what it is. It's an administrative approval to say, do these conditions on our pre-plat, do they meet that so that we can check the box when it comes to final plat? So we are working with the airport diligently to make sure that these construction-related concerns, which you've heard about today, are addressed and tied to the appropriate mechanism. And we've worked with your city attorney. We appreciate the feedback from your city manager. We'll continue to work with your planning department, again, to condition those things at the appropriate timing. So is that a pre-plat? I would suggest to you, it's not the pre-plat. We're talking about the line work. Is it a construction permit? Is it a building permit? Those are where we've tried to memorialize. We do have a working document, and I said the same at Planning Commission, that we have a working document with the planning department, with your city attorney, to outline those mechanisms of how we can address booms, how we can address notification to the airport, those construction-related things, and good faith moving forward. We've tied those to really important permits, building permit, grading permit. We've agreed not to pull at-risk grading permits. We're working with the FAA. We have our 7460 analysis in queue and just received, actually in the dependency of this meeting, that we're expecting that sign-off by formal letter tomorrow. So we're way ahead of that, even though that's a construction-related mechanism. We're doing that at that pre-plat stage. So I just wanted to put that on record for this body to consider where we are in the process, that future work needs to happen, future coordination needs to happen. We respect all of that, but we would appreciate moving forward with this initial pre-plat design. We're going to need to come forward for final plat approval. We're going to need a final plat to pull any building permit. We're committed to, you know, communicating with your directors, with your planning department, with your city attorney. I've asked for comments two times now on the last version of a commitment memo, memorializing these points and putting them with the appropriate teeth at the appropriate demarcations. But is that a pre-plat? No. Are you going to see that in a, in a future pre-plat submittal? Likely not, because that's not something that your planning department can check a box and recommend a final plat approval to this body. So I just wanted to put that a little bit into context of where we are in the process, where future engineering comes. Pre-plat is our, you know, initial grading, initial feedback from your city departments. But we're going to be back for a final plat. We are committed, again, to working with your airport. We have our track spaces, which if you approved a pre-plat, we would need to be in conformance of, in conformance of. So that's your teeth. And just wanted to provide a little additional context of where we are, our commitments moving forward, and how we're trying to work with your, your different divisions here on creating enforcement at the appropriate places. Again, your building permits, your construction permits. And I'm happy to address any questions. I thank you for your time, your consideration, your great feedback, and just wanted to, again, introduce ourselves and say what we're doing to address these very valid concerns.
Well, I know there are some concerns about these lots, one through 23, that are right on that kind of red and amber-colored line. And from my understanding, once you approve a preliminary plat, if the substantial conformance to the preliminary plat proceeds, then you have to approve the final plat. So I think the only preliminary plat design that we're really concerned about is that one row of homes. The other consideration about building permit, grading permits, construction, that, that can all be worked out, I think.
I agree. I think those means and methods of construction is something to be determined before those aspects are dealt with. But as it relates to those, I guess, one through 23, it does look like it's, but the airport said it was appropriate. Those, those housing was appropriate, but we would have potentially problems with the construction or the means and methods there. And so we'd have to work that out. But in terms of the line work, I believe that the airport said they were okay with that. But I'll let you address it.
Is that correct, Dr. Sabata?
The houses themselves, yes, those areas, we looked at them and the, presuming that the grading goes down in that area. And we have to look at the final 7460, in which you guys got approved, for the actual home itself. That's, that's something that the airspace expert said that row of homes could go in. What's important is, we also said that the, for example, the CCNRs or whatever the restrictions are, if they plant a tree that goes above the height of the home, the tree itself becomes an obstruction that we really have to deal with, and that's a real sensitive area. The other big issue is we got to get going on those 7460s for the temporary obstruction, because it can be a deal breaker. If it's going to break our approaches, we will not be able to support this project. So the sooner we get those airspace analyses into the FAA for the temporary obstructions, the sooner we can see if it's going to affect the approaches. And that, to me, is paramount. We need to work closely with the airspace expert. I actually did bring Dibble with us today. Did you want to hear from them?
Sure.
Sure. This is Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
Yeah. To Robin's point, really, for this particular area, it's going to be the construction activity that's going to, could potentially be problematic with FAA. So I, I would agree. I would encourage the developer and the builder to get those temporary ones in, whether it's the boom for the concrete or the crane for the trusses. Get those in quick so we can look at those, because if, if there's going to be a problem, it's going to arise because of those. And that's where we need to have a, a good indication of what the issue is going to be.
And just to make sure everybody's aware, normally, it's a 45 to 60-day period. If this actually does look at an adjustment on approach, a problem with an approach, this will go into a public hearing. And so if it is, the FAA will not make a decision until it goes through that particular process, and that can take months. It's really time for them to get on this and right away, because I do believe there's going to be opposition in the user community if we lose our approaches, even for a significant period of time.
Mayor, may I come in?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, again, we are expecting that 7460 analysis to come back tomorrow. We've received confirmation. We are ahead of the game on that. Again, that is a construction-related issue. And even if we came back with a denial of our 7460, which we do not anticipate, but hypothetically speaking, we have enough time. We're coming back to this body for a final plat. We're coming back to the planning department for construction permits, for building permits. So we have time in our process to rectify and address any of those conditions. The fact that Ash Dorn's ahead of the game, I really gave them kudos and credit, because they've invested the time and the money to have this coordination so early in the process. But again, just wanted to address that we have time on this project to move forward. If you're familiar with construction, there's demarcations that you need to move through to release additional funds, additional money. There's construction timelines. There's development timelines that are really important to Ash Dorn. So the fact that we've moved forward and kind of secured this FAA 7460 earlier in the process and maybe what would be typical is a great thing, because we can continue to work with the airport. Again, temporary obstruction, that is a construction issue, not a pre-plat issue. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have a question. This is a procedural question about the preliminary plat. And I don't know, whoever wants to answer this can answer this. So we're tasked with approving a preliminary plat today, but my impression is that there are stipulations that have been worked out with the developer and the city. Is, is that correct, more or less? Do I, do I have that right?
And there are stipulations, but I, I would like to say it's not part of the preliminary plat, because the preliminary plat scope is so much smaller. So we wanted to let the developer know, hey, this doesn't mean we're okay with the project going forward, because there's all these potential problems. But in terms of what we're approving, or you're approving today, potentially, it's so much more limited. It's the line work. So we do have kind of those conditional agreement, but--
I guess, I guess my concern is, and I, and I get that. I appreciate that nuance. But nevertheless, not knowing about those things before I walked into this room today seems like a failure, to be perfectly honest. Like not, like that, those conversations have happened at some level on staff, and that we don't know about it before we walk into this room today? Yeah, that doesn't make me feel great. And, and it makes this decision harder. And I guess that's what I don't understand, is if you guys are going to the work to do all this coordination, read us in, so that we don't have to spend, you know, two hours talking about a preliminary plat that's line work. I mean, if that's the case, I mean, am I missing something? Like, I mean, it's, this is work that, and this is money for these people over here. It's time for our city staff. It's time for me, you know? So I, I just don't understand why we didn't know about what these stipulations were. Do, I mean, is there, i- is it that they're so minor that they're not important? Or is it that they're so unrelated that they're not important?
I think because they're unrelated to what you're looking at today.
I, I, respectfully, I just don't, everything you're saying that I've heard today is that this is, and I appreciate what you're saying about the construction piece of it, and I get that. And I know we're not approving construction. But what I heard my airport director say today was that you guys aren't very good at construction and following the rules, and that's disappointing. And, and I, and so I, I guess it feels like, I, I know this is a very simple process, but man alive, like, are you guys going to hold through to the commitments you've made with the attorney and the community development department? I don't know. You guys can't communicate that you put up 49 booms. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for that question. So to address your specific question, Councilmember Montoya, that is part of the beauty of this working document that we've done back and forth, is that we're tying these notification to a grading permit, for instance, or to a building permit, or to, you know, again, those construction monuments. We've agreed not to pull an at-risk grading permit. I understand that there was an incident with a crane recently. I can only speak for Ash Dorn in recent events, right? We addressed it as, as quick as possible. But that's the beauty of the subsequent conversations we've had. What happens when this project is final plat and we're pulling building permits? That's the mechanism to hold our feet to the fire. It's not the line work on a pre-plat. It's that we've agreed, okay, no at-risk grading permit for you. We are going to agree to this notification process in exchange for your building permits. That's holding our feet to the fire, councilmembers. So it's a great question, and I look forward to Ash Dorn and us working forward, excuse me, working collaboratively, moving forward and building in those proper mechanisms. But you wouldn't be able to, for instance, on a final plat, say, okay, have you notified the airport of your boom? That doesn't do any good. That's tough enforcement for your planning department. That gives us a final plat that'll never be approved, because the mechanism that you really want is when we're at construction doing this to make sure the notification's being had.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Mayor Brotem.
Oh, I have a question for Ashley. Ashley, you're very well spoken and on top of your game. But as we all know, that if a final plat is approved, it will be exempt forever from our AVO district. So my question is, is your goal to get this final plat approved as fast as possible so it will be approved and get a final plat so it will be exempt in, from the AVO district?
Mayor, Mayor Brotem, thank you for that question. It is a very delicate issue, as I know this council's very aware. We are seeking a plat subject to the vested entitlements. This pre-plat has been, gosh, Duane, you've been probably working on it for a couple of years at this juncture. So we are motivated, right, to move forward with our entitlements that we have now. There's time and money being held up. This pre-plat came to the commission in June, before even drafts of the AVO were exchanged. So we will need to work through those AVO issues. We've been in communication, again, with your, your planning department. But we have vested rights right now that we're trying to act upon, that were in motion before the AVO was even on our radar, and bad pun intended. So please forgive me. But yes, we would like to have our pre-plat approved. We will continue to work with your planning department on, on issues that arise of it. But this has been in existence long before the AVO discussion even came about.
Okay, and thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman can tell me.
Yes. Actually, I have another question for you, if you don't mind. So has the builder recognized the fact that we could potentially have, Robin brought up a very good point about the trees. Will he have an approved list of trees, and will that be enforced? Will it be written into the CCNRs?
Mayor, councilmember, thank you very much for that question. And that's actually an item you could condition our pre-plat approval on, is that the homeowner association tract will have trees at, you know, maturation of 10 feet. And that's something we discussed that could be part of a landscape plan, that could be part of a, a pre-plat approval. But that's a mechanism that we could actually, you know, move forward with. It is in our, again, working document that we've agreed that those HOA tracks will include vegetation. I believe it's 10 feet, something we can enforce. We can put that as a plat note, and we're off to the races. Some of the other construction related things, you know, can effectuate. But a landscape plan, for instance, we can put that type of vegetation in and put a condition on a pre-plat.
But has that been part of this builder's history? Has he instituted a landscaping plan in other developments, or is this a new thing for him?
Mayor, councilmember, I would have to obviously ask Ash Dorn, but traditionally, landscape plans are approved as part of the process for your final plat, for your building permits. You have to go through the city. I would defer, you know, to Mr. Warley on their checklist items on the proper mechanism, or excuse me, proper procedure. But landscape plans are very routine. We'd be very familiar in how to do one and how to work with your planning staff on doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Shishka.
I must, I'm, I'm getting that the process is in question. And, you know, I'm, I'm somewhat reticent to say that I wouldn't vote for it. I mean, you know, if in fact, and well, George, what I tried to get out of you is, are, what are our responsibilities under the master plan? If there are rights that are already given under the master plan, are we just kind of holding up the process by not approving the preliminary plat? I mean, doesn't the, it sounds to me like the preliminary plat starts all this stuff. Am I wrong?
Do you not want to?
Well, I think a lot of that's a legal question as to the entitlement question that was raised earlier about things that are covered by the master plan. The master plan itself says that the process for a preliminary plat and a final plat-- The master plan itself says that the process for a preliminary plat and a final plat follow those that are written into the city zoning code. So it's the same process, whether it's within Deepwater Ranch or out of Deepwater Ranch. The process involves looking at, the word line work, we don't usually use that in planning, but the word line work has come up, the layout of lots, the arrangement of streets, the connectivity to adjacent properties. And then a lot of details happen between preliminary plat and a final plat, including a landscape plan, as Councilwoman Cantalmy asked about. That's normally a final plat submittal, because you have to design your water and sewer infrastructure, and you have to know where all of those connections would occur at that later date. So I don't know if that...
So a lot of what we're talking about today comes after the preliminary plat. It's almost as though we're starting negotiations on, you know, other than, you know, where are you going to put the streets and where are you going to put the, you know, the sewer and the water and things like that.
I'm not sure I would answer it quite that way. There is a staged series of reviews that occur for subdivision plats, the preliminary being the first, and the preliminary is where you lay out the lots and approximately where you want them. Some deviation can occur with the final plat. The intention is a picture that they get some approval from so that they can go spend the money on all the rest of the process. The big money always comes after preliminary plat and before final. And then at final plat, you're verifying that it is substantially what you saw at preliminary plat. And that's, those are the two main stages that council plays a part in. And typically, the plat itself and the plat notes, it's not uncommon to have a whole page of notes that are associated with a subdivision plat. Those notes are generally related to the final development of the subdivision, not the individual homes to be built later. Those are covered by building codes and other zoning codes that apply to them.
Okay. So where are we then? I think it looks to me like this preliminary plat does meet the requirements that we expect for construction setbacks, open space, all the expectations within the master plan. And almost, almost all of our concerns will be addressed after the preliminary plat has been approved, and we get into the permitting and grading and CCNR inclusions, navigation easements, all those will happen subsequent to this decision. Am I generally...
That's my perspective.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I think the question is, not that you want to put up a stop sign, is when do you put the stop sign up? Right?
I mean, once the plat is approved, then they can start proceeding with the agreements for construction and grading and heights and all the other concerns that we brought up today.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Sorry, I just, I just want to say, given, in light of some of the clarification that Ashley's made and what Joe has said and what the mayor just said, I guess I can find my way to getting to yes on this preliminary plat, but I will say I have grave concerns about Dorn's records as a builder in this community. And I am going to put a lot of pressure on community development to step up their game to be a more accountable enforcement mechanism. Because we, this is too, too serious to let our guard down. And I just, I want to put it on the record, you guys have a very important job when it comes to getting between now and the approval of the preliminary plat and to before it comes back to us for final plat. And the concern I think I have that has happened since I've been a member of this council is that there are final plats that come that I might not even be up here when this final plat comes, comes back around. And so what, the problem is, you guys come back to us and you say, well, here's the final plat, and you approved the preliminary plat, and this is in substantial conformance. That doesn't mean a whole lot to me if I wasn't here, right? And so I guess you guys need to, you need to convey your story of how you got from A to B better as, on a staff level. And I think there was an opportunity to do that today. And I don't like that, and Robin, don't take this personally, you're welcome to take vacations, but man, it would have been nice if there was a little bit more coordination on this before today. I can support this preliminary plat based on what I understand my legal responsibility to do, but man, Dorn, you guys have to be better about being community players when it comes to your boom operations. I mean...
Well, and we need to be more draconian in our responses. If you don't do what we need you to do, you can't scrape earth.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't go vertical.
And here are the consequences if you do.
And if you put a boom up, it's going to cost you. I mean, this is a two-way street.
I guess Robin has something to say.
Is it possible that this, if you decide to vote out it, is it possible that it could become with the conditions that some of these issues be addressed prior to coming back for final plat, so it doesn't come back as a final issue that, that already was set in stone essentially, as long as they have the same line drawings?
I'm still not comfortable. There's just too many stipulations, too many things up in the air. I think this is still a preliminary plat, and it's still in the preliminary plat stage. And I'm afraid if we move it forward, we're just going to lose our leverage to negotiate these issues and get things in writing.
I mean, I don't even know if we're prepared to create a list of conditions tonight.
Yeah, right now. Yeah, right now.
I believe that Robin articulated a list of conditions, and then the follow-up letter was not what you expected it to be, is that...
No, it did contain some things, but it didn't contain enough, and these were the remaining items that were not addressed clearly enough. So it would be the letter plus these conditions.
Okay.
And with the understanding, which I read into the record, that should there be an adverse FAA finding affecting safety or normal aircraft operations, as we move toward final plat approval, we do reserve the right to object to any proposed structures, temporary or permanent, based on the temporary obstruction finding, which would mean possibly that we would protest against it should the cranes affect our approaches.
Robin, can you please send that to me? Because I can type fast, but not that fast.
I'll send it to you, I will.
Yeah. So if we were to vote to approve this preliminary plat with those stipulations, Ashley, what are your responses to that?
Mayor, thank you very much. I am getting these stipulations live like you are, right? So I'm trying to react to them as best as I can. The problem I'm having is how do we enforce these stipulations for a final plat? That's exactly the problem you're having, right? How do we check a box when we go to final plat approval? Again, holding our feet to the fire is instructing your planning department, no at-risk grading permit, no construction permit, no building permit. That's where the teeth comes in. Because when we come to you for a final plat, you're, in my opinion, and, you know, your city attorney is here to counsel you on that, but you're looking for substantial conformance as this is an administrative approval. This is not a zoning case. This is not where we can put some of those conditions. You know, we want to work with your airport, we want to work with your planning. I think our deal point memo is a really fine showing of that. We were not obligated to do that. We were not obligated to kind of put forth those conditions. We were well within our rights to ask for an at-risk grading permit. So where my reaction is, is when we come forth to this council and we say, we are ready, we've done our advanced engineering, we would like you to look at our plat and say it's substantial conformance, how do you, as a body, check that, that box that we have, you know, notify the airport of something we're going to be doing, you know, a year, a year and a half from now, because the construction timeline is going to take that? So my preference on Ash Dorn would be to counsel us as you have. We have that expectation to direct your planning department to say, make sure you're on top of their building permits, their at-risk grading permits, their construction permits. That's how you hold our feet to the fire. Allow us to move through this process with your admonitions, so that way, when we do come to a final plat, there's something concrete this body can measure it against, because I don't know how you approve a final plat for something that's going to happen a year and a half from now.
Very good. You know, we've got to wrap this up and make a decision.
I know. I just want to clarify one thing with our attorney. Joe, if we approve this today, just to clarify, they will not have to comply with the AVO if we approve the AVO after the fact. And have you...
Can I give you an answer on this? I'm reluctant because it involves a lot of the legal advice we've discussed in an executive session.
We need to be careful about how we should count our hands.
Can I ask a legal question?
Go ahead.
So my question, and I'll keep this brief, if we approve this preliminary plat, and as Ashley said, they're chief with our community development department with issuing of permits. And let's say they don't comply with some of the things that they have said that they would do, and we say, hey, we're not going to give you this building permit until you resolve this issue, can they suggest that we have created an impasse for them?
We're already in an impasse with them?
I know, but I'm saying presumably the impasse would resolve if we approved this preliminary plat.
Correct.
So then, and I guess that's what I'm saying, is if we approve this preliminary plat, we're out of an impasse. And then if we, if they do not comply with some of the admonitions that we have given them tonight, and we say, we can't issue you this building permit, and they re-trigger the impasse?
It's a different animal.
They can restart the impasse, conceivably, but it wouldn't just re-trigger at this point that we're currently at.
Okay.
Can I say something?
One more.
We have to remember that the builder, Ash Dorn, is here with their attorney, and the reason why she's here is to let us know that if we don't jump through their hoops, then she's going to sue us. And she's been rattling sabers, and we have to realize that. And they're going to sue us anyway, so I think we need to do our job, and I'm not comfortable with this. And her whole object is to get this project rammed through so it'll be exempt from our AVO district, and we'll have 700-plus more unhappy people complaining about the airport noise because they weren't properly notified, and we may have a potential dangerous public safety issue of residences in the impact play. So that's, that's what I have to say. I'm sorry if I sound cynical.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Forgot to turn it off.
We're done.
Mayor, can I make a motion? You can. I move to approve PLN 21-007.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Fails to three.
Can we take another motion with the stipulations involved attached to it?
Yes, Mayor.
I thought that's what we were voting on.
No, I'm...
Mayor, I'll move, I'll move to approve PLN 21-007 with the stipulations that have been discussed. I don't, I don't know the right way for that, Sarah. You can clean that up, I guess, in the backend?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please vote on that one.
Passes 4-1. Or I'm sorry, yes, 4-1. I'm tired. Passes.
All right, well, this concludes our meeting tonight.
I do have a quote from Harry "The Buck Stops Here" Truman. Work hard, do your best, keep your word, never get too big for your britches, trust in God, have no fear, and never forget a friend. This meeting is adjourned.